Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, March 8, 2021. It is 6:01 PM and I am calling this meeting of the National Board of Education to order. As President of the Board of Education, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the Governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Order 202004, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I'm confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the Agenda, Page 3, or the district's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, please dial 1-877-853-5257, passcode 424632. To join by Zoom, the meeting ID is 88035490161, And again, all of this information is on our website under Meeting Documents. It is on our Agenda, Page 3. You can go there and read it for yourself in case I read too fast. I apologize for that. I try to be slow. Okay, so having said that, if our clerk could please call the roll?
Ms. Bishop is here. Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Ms. Odin?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Yeah.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Guarino? I heard you. Ms. Zim?
Here.
And Ms. Timmons?
Here.
Hi. We also have Dr. McKinney, I'm just looking around my screen, Ms. O'Gara, Ms. Kinsella, Ms. Brunel, Ms. Gingras, Mr. Parker, going onto my next screen, Mr. Andrade, sorry, Ms. Davies, Mr. Donovan, and Mr. Dunn. Did I say you twice? Probably not. Okay, good. Did I miss anybody? Okay. We're all here and accounted for.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bishop. I appreciate it. I was trying to keep track of who was suing the Pledge of Allegiance and I did not. So I apologize to everyone. I have no idea who did it last time. Mr. Dunn, would you mind leading us to... Actually, I do remember now.
I did it last time, yeah.
Don't do it. Okay. So let's have Ms. Zim lead us today, if you don't mind, Ms. Zim.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Zim. Nicely done. Okay, so the next, the first item on our agenda is to welcome Ms. Davies, the grant writer that we share with the city. Thank you so much for joining us again, Ms. Davies. And I understand that you have found another grant for us. Yay!
Yes, so this grant is for food services and it's to cover the cost of two carts because the food services are having to move to a grab-and-go so more kids can grab things on their way out the door or the way into the school. It'll be used for both breakfast and lunch. We'll have one at each high school and it'll just make it a lot easier for them to pick up. We'll be able to get larger volumes of food out by having multiple locations for pickup. So, and it's for what, $5,156, which will completely cover the cost. There's no matching funds required.
Thank you, Ms. Davies, and thank you to Ms. Daigle, our Director of Food Services, for noticing the need and making a plan to get it. One question. The letter that I have is 5,128. What's the correct number?
It's the 5,156.
Five, one, five, six. Okay, I would just want to make sure we have that correct. So I am looking for a motion to accept the dairy-on-the-go grant and the amount of $5,156.
So moved.
Okay, I heard Ms. Timmons and...
Second.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna say by Ms. Timmons and seconded by Ms. Gilio. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Ms. Davies? I don't see any. Okay. When you're ready, Ms. Bishop.
Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Thank you. Yes, absolutely. Good news. Appreciate it.
And Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you, Ms. Davies, for taking time out of your night to come present this to us.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a presentation by our Athletic Director, Ms. Gingras, about spring athletics. And I have to say, both as a board member and as a parent of an athlete, I'm really excited to hear this. So take it away.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Raymond. I'm gonna go ahead and just share this. I only have a few slides this evening.
Just, just a quick reminder to everyone, when we are in slideshow mode, I cannot see everybody. So if you can either hold your questions till the end or indicate in the chat if you have a question, I will get to you once the slideshow is done. Is that acceptable? Okay. I don't see anybody, so I guess there's no objections.
All right. Thank you again for just allowing me to take time out of your meeting to speak with you briefly about our upcoming interscholastic athletic season. I'm really hopeful that after this spring season and the continued vaccinations throughout our community, that we'll be able to go back to normal next fall. In your packets, you do have a two-page document outlining the major changes from what we've talked about for fall and winter into this spring. In this brief presentation, I'll go through those six points very quickly. You should also have received the full sports-specific protocols that outline our spring sports: baseball, softball, lacrosse, track, and tennis. So again, this evening, I'm just looking for the Board to make a decision as to whether or not our middle and high schools will have an interscholastic athletic season this spring, obviously following all necessary safety protocols. Just to let everybody know, I did meet with Bobby Bagley and members of the Public Health Department on February 26 to review all of our protocols and incorporate any of their suggestions. So the first major change came from the National Federation of High School Sports in the middle of February. If you recall from fall and winter, we talked about low, moderate, and high-risk sports, categorizing each sport as either a green, yellow, or red sport. The National Federation has dropped this categorization of all of our athletic programs. Instead, it's been determined that the strongest predictor of transmission through interscholastic athletics is what the community rates are. So they moved forward and the Sports Medicine Advisory Committee identified five factors in assessing the potential transmission related to school athletics. The five factors, I'll be honest with you, when I first read them, it was kind of like, these are common sense. So there's nothing really earth-shattering here. The first, as I just mentioned, transmission rates of participants in school athletics is directly proportional to what the rates are in your community. The second one is that non-contact sports, things such as tennis and track, have lower transmission rates than contact sports such as hockey or lacrosse. Outdoor sports have a lower potential transmission rate than indoor sports do. And it's also been determined that indoor sports, when students are wearing face masks, is approximately equal to what you see in outdoor sports. And the greatest majority, again, we've seen this in our own community in our state, that the greatest majority of sports-related spread is due to the social contact and social interactions as opposed to the actual playing of a sport. So probably the biggest change this season is all of our sports are outdoor sports. In the fall, they were all outdoors except for volleyball. In the winter, they were all indoors except for ski. But in the spring, everything is outside, once the ground is ready for us to trample on it and once the weather cooperates. Our start dates, the NHIAA has delayed the start of our spring season by one week. They did that in hopes that by March 29, most of us will be able to get outside and won't need as much time inside in our gyms. So on March 24, we're looking to do our high school impact testing by appointment only. March 29 would be the first day of tryouts and practices for both middle and high school. And the first date for any games or competitions would be Monday, April 12. It's important that as we see our numbers going down and as more people are getting vaccinated, that we still remain vigilant on our precautions. The people are still wearing masks and watching their distance. So for the spring season, we will still require masks at all times unless it's deemed more unsafe for that sport. For example, a student participating in pole vault, going up in the air 15 feet over another bar, that's probably pretty dangerous if they don't have full vision because sometimes the mask will drop your vision. So, sorry about that. So for pole vault, as one example, we may not require students to wear masks to compete in that. Another example might be sprinting over hurdles or potentially our pitchers and catchers in baseball and softball. So those determinations will be made as we get closer to games and once students get into practice and obviously we'll consult with Public Health before making those decisions. The next few slides are probably some of the most important as everybody wants to know how we're gonna handle individuals and teams when there are COVID concerns. These have been updated. There are some changes that we'll talk about and they've been updated to reflect the changes in the CDC and New Hampshire in terms of the quarantine guidelines. So if someone's exhibiting symptoms, this has not changed, whether a student fails a screening or gets up in the morning and isn't feeling well. There's been no change there, so we simply send the student home or ask them to stay home until there's something great. The next section, if someone has been exposed to someone with COVID, traveled outside of New England, or attended large gatherings, they will be sent home immediately. Individuals will be asked to quarantine for 10 days at this point. So that is a change. I don't know why this keeps skipping. I apologize. So that is a change from our winter protocols because it did change in January, I believe, that the state of New Hampshire did reduce this to a 10-day quarantine. We cannot, we are not going to allow testing out of quarantine, and I'll talk about that in one second. As long as a student or coach or whoever member of the team does not have any symptoms present, they may return on Day 11 after the exposure or the travel. But they should continue to monitor their symptoms all the way through Day 14. So between Days 11 and 14, they may still develop symptoms of COVID. If symptoms arrive, then that person should go back to the top of this slide and start that 10-day quarantine from the time symptoms appear. We are not going, as I just mentioned, to allow for testing out of the 10-day quarantine. New Hampshire guidelines do allow for the option of ending the quarantine after Day 7 by having a negative molecular test or the PCR test, as most people are used to hearing that. This is only if a student, if an individual is asymptomatic. But the guidelines also require that the person self-absor, self-observe, excuse me, their symptoms and strictly adhere to COVID mitigation measures. These COVID mitigation measures include avoiding social and group gatherings. So if from Day 7 to 10, you can't be in a group setting, I don't know how you can go to a practice or a game. So that's why we are maintaining the full 10-day quarantine. The other thing that's important is there are two exceptions. I apologize. Don't know what's going on. There are two exceptions to this 10-day quarantine, and that is if you are fully vaccinated. So either 14 days past the second dose of the Moderna or the Pfizer, or I believe it is two weeks after the one shot from Johnson &amp; Johnson. And individuals who have previously tested positive for COVID within the last 90 days are also exempt, according to New Hampshire guidelines, from the quarantine. In both of these cases, we would require documentation so that we know that that is the reason that the quarantine does not have to be followed. This slide, no changes here. If somebody is waiting test results, we do a temporary shutdown of the team and then from there, depending whether the test was positive or negative, we follow the appropriate protocols. The other big change would be to spectators. I was here last week and thank you very much for allowing spectators to come to our playoff games. We had some pretty great games last week. So for the spring, we will go back to the fall. So because everything is outside, we will start the season with home fans only. But each participant on the home team would be allowed four tickets per person instead of just two that we had in the winter indoors. Again, the expectation is immediate family, New England residents only. We would like to look, I don't know what's going on, I apologize. We would like to look positively towards the middle of May, 10 days after April vacation. Again, as long as numbers continue to come down, as long as vaccination numbers continue to go up to the middle of May, start allowing visiting fans to come to our events and then continue that practice through the end of the season and into our playoffs. So that's what we're hoping to do. And again, all spectators would be wearing masks at all times. And that's it. Tried to keep it short and sweet this evening.
Oops. Thank you so much, Ms. Gingras. So I think at this time, I am looking for a motion
Uh, very thorough and alleviated, I guess, fears that I might have. I know that we've been successful in the past with with sports and when there was a problem, we we've dealt with the problem right away. I know you've shut things down when when we had problems and. Um, so it it's great that we give the students some something, you know, they that they salvage something out of this crisis. And I and I and I really want to thank you for that. I just wanted to um tell you this job well done.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments for Ms. Jengris? Oh, Ms. Brown?
Sorry, I did actually. It's another thing related to fans. Um, would we treat it differently if it was like North versus South? Would we think, um, I don't know how often they actually meet up in events?
Well, that is also part of the logic behind hopefully opening it to visiting fans in the middle of May because the way our schedules are set right now, North and South would face each other the last week of the season.
Thank you.
That was a good question, Ms. Brown. I was actually wondering that myself. Um, that would be weird to not have both of them there. Okay, anybody else? Um, I don't see anything, so uh, I think we're ready to go ahead and take a vote.
Okay. Um. Waiting for it to get a little quieter over here. Uh, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Giulio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero. Great. Thank, thank you, everybody.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you, Ms. Jengris. I appreciate it and I'm looking forward to it. So just one final question that I should have asked two seconds ago. Um, registration is open, correct? We opened it up a couple of weeks ago. When is the last day for um students to register?
Thank you for bringing that up. So registration is open and it is our common practice that registration stays open through the first day of practices and tryouts. So we give the students that opportunity to show up and realize they're not registered. They don't participate that day. They go home, they take care of registration, and they can come back the next day. So the last day to register would be March 29th. But if students want to participate on that first day, they really should get their registration done as soon as possible.
And are you still requiring them to watch the video?
Yes. Yep, there are, um, there is a middle school version and a high school version of the protocols and precautions that we would take. Um, a little bit more expanded than the presentation you just saw, but it does include the information about quarantining and wearing masks and all of those things.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jengris. Okay. So with that, we will move on. It's come to my attention that there are people who call into our meetings right at the beginning and then kind of hang out in the waiting room, unable to um access and see the meeting until we have the public comment period and it's their turn. Um, so I just wanted to remind the public that our Zoom session participants are only the the people who are actually um, uh, participating in the meeting. And then we allow public access by broadcasting it on Channel 99, um, the ETV website, um, and the ETV Facebook page typically has a live stream as well. Um, and then we allow the public to come into the meeting during public comment period to have their say um, two times during the evening. Um, so people are welcome to call whenever they like, if they're happy to stay on hold. Um, but if you don't want to stay on hold for too terribly long, please um try to wait and call right before the public comment period, which is um right after this next section. So um, moving on. Uh, we are on the consent agenda. Did anyone have anything to add or remove from the consent agenda? I don't see anything. Um, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Go ahead.
Um, motion by Mr. Guarino and seconded by, I'm sorry, was that Ms. Timmons?
Okay.
No?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay.
Move it, but he beat me to it, so.
Oh, okay. Okay, and I apologize. Uh, it does get a little loud at my house occasionally, so. I try to stay on mute when I'm not talking, but these things happen. Um, Ms. Bishop?
The motion to approve the consent agenda, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Giulio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you, everybody. Um, I have nothing uh removed. Are there any communications outside the consent agenda this evening? Okay, seeing none. This brings us to our first public question comment period. Um, again, uh, if you have a question or a comment relating to items on this agenda, now would be the time um to call or to log into Zoom. Um, and you'll be let in roughly in the order in which you call. We do our best. Um, please remember that this is limited to 15 minutes, so try and be concise so that everyone gets a turn. Um, there was a question that came up since the last meeting about um whether people are required to identify themselves. Um, we ran that by legal and the answer is, in fact, you do need to give um your name first and last um when you do call in. Uh, here in Nashua, we ask if you indicate that you indicate that you live in Nashua or you have some compelling interest in the Nashville Board of Education. Okay, having gotten all that out, um, Ms. Kinsella, who have you got for us this evening?
Okay, let's start.
All right. Good evening, caller 3556. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hi. Oh, can you turn down the volume then? Hi, this is Lisa Ballinger.
Good evening, Ms. Ballinger. Go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Um, I'd like to start by thanking um Dr. McKinney for stepping up as interim superintendent. He's done amazing job of being the calm in the storm in the very short time that he's been there. Um, to the board, I hope you guys are considering him as an internal candidate, assuming he applies because more communication, thought, planning, and action have happened in his short tenure here as interim than under mostly since March. We suggest that you also save the district money and hire McKinney rather than the uh advertising the position with an outside firm. Let's start planning to ensure five full days without question come fall. With regard to hybrid, we hope that you're going to work towards eliminating cohorts for those hybrid kids. We're at approximately 50% of students attending on a hybrid basis and the classes, halls, and parking lots are like ghost towns. Um, so I believe that the school can accommodate all students that want to be there in person. Our kids deserve five full days, but we take four full days for now. Finally, we need to work towards making Fridays instructional again. Our kids deserve better and in-person learning is safe on all levels. Five full days should be mandatory. They were before COVID. Our key kids' needs for education have not changed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ballinger.
And we don't have anybody else in the waiting room at the present time.
Okay, well, um, I guess we'll move on to um the superintendent's comments. Uh, Dr. McKinney?
Thank you, Mrs. Raymond. Uh, we're continuing with kindergarten online registration. We now have 235 kindergarteners registered. I just wanted to remind all families of five-year-olds to please register for kindergarten for the upcoming school year as soon as possible. You can find a link to register by scrolling to the bottom of the homepage at Nashua.edu and click on registration. We anticipate enrollment to increase as the spring progresses and just last week we had 28 new first graders registered for our schools. March is National National Social Social Workers Month. So please take a moment this month to salute our social workers in schools. The timing of this recognition could not be more important with so many demands on their time as they help and support our families during the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you to each of our school's social workers who are doing so much to address the social, emotional, and household needs of our students. Scholastic Art and Writing Awardee, congratulations to Sarah Hines, South Class of 2021, who is the recipient of a Silver Key Award for her photography. She created a portfolio titled "Around the City", comprised of photos she took during visits to Boston and New York City. She also earned an honorable mention for her for her photograph, "Nostalgia Beyond a Window". She is a very talented photo photographer with a great eye for architecture. Congratulations to Neil Cacciapelli, South Class of 2021. Neil was announced as a candidate to the US Senate Youth Program. Neil was selected as a candidate and Stephen Norris, North Class of 2021, was selected as an alternate. The US Senate Youth Program is a highly competitive program and delegates are selected by each state's Department of Education. Students selected to participate in the program, which will be held virtually this year, will receive a $10,000 scholarship. Neil is also one of several directors of Neil's Matter and is planning on pursuing a degree in computer science in college. And Stephen, as board members know, is a former student representative to the Board of Education. We are very proud that this prestigious program selected two of our students to honor when students from all over New Hampshire were considered and only three were honored. The Bureau of Career Development at the New Hampshire of Education awarded Nashua a CTE program a one-year $50,000 grant to purchase supplies and materials for our students to build an electronic car. Our students will have the opportunity to practice in-demand skills and competencies in this rapidly emerging sector of our economy. This is a super great opportunity for our students. And in the end, our CTE program can elect to sell the car or have the students dismantle and store for another class of students. Essentially, this grant is an extension of the Federal Perkins Career and Technical Education Funding Program. And last but not least, uh, the great news that's come in from the end of last week into this week is uh the next round or phase of COVID vaccine two-way signup. So all our district employees will be getting some great news this week and will be able to sign up for vaccinations before the end of the month. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McKinney. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments um regarding Dr. McKinney's superintendent comments? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you very much. Um, Dr. McKinney, I'd like to say thank you for everything you've done and congratulate our students. Um, but you said that we right now have uh 235 kindergarten students registered. Do you think um we can get a list of which schools they're going to be going in at this point in time so we have an idea of where in the district um the students are being signed up to? And if we can keep a kind of like a running total to the board so we can see where we're going with our kindergarten students and which schools?
Uh, if the entire board feels the need for that report, I get a weekly report every week from Student Services that tells the number of students and what schools they're at. There are 253 kindergarten students. We have room for 820. Well, we certainly can include a weekly update or a monthly update. I think timing is going to be important as we go through the spring and summer and announce our plans going forward for people new registrants.
I would ask the board if um they would grant me that wish, I guess, so we can see exactly where we're going with our kindergarten students this year. I think it's very important to see where we're going with all the students enrollment as hopefully we open up schools again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Um, I think everyone's interested in enrollments. Um, I don't know that we all need a weekly report. Would you be satisfied with a monthly report or something included in our packet uh for each meeting?
You get a bi-monthly report?
That's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be fine. Yep, in a package. That'd be fine.
Does anyone have any objection to adding um an enrollment report to our packet? I don't see any objections. So, Dr. McKinney, if you don't mind, thank you so much. Okay, anything else, um, Ms. Johnson? No? Okay, great. Uh, did anyone else? Uh, Ms. Brown?
Hi, um, I thank you, Dr. McKinney and Heather. Um, so I actually just wanted to share a little story I heard from a teacher this week and commend the unsung heroes of the school district, the food service workers and with a great job they're doing with the hot lunch. Um, I heard about the students coming in off of the cold buses and getting to grab a delicious foil-wrapped breakfast sandwich in just really tasty to start their day. So that leads me to my question is, um, it, I wanted to, this is where I wanted to ask you. Is it accurate that all students right now um are, can get free breakfast and free lunch throughout the district um at all levels? Um, and my second question regarding that is, um, is, do we still have forms outstanding that need to be filled out?
Uh, Ms. Brown, I'll take your second question first. Yes, we want more and more people filling out those forms. That's incredibly important. I've been on a number of calls, both at the state and federal level. So if you can fill out a lunch application, it's more than just a form. Uh, for questions regarding uh breakfast and lunch, we'll turn it over to the one and only Mr. Donovan.
It, it looks like he might be frozen.
I think Mr. Donovan is having connectivity issues because he fell up kind of up off the meeting and I just let him in again and he's frozen, so I believe he is having some issues and he's gone.
Can we circle back to that when Mr. Donovan is able to connect again? Um, I'm sure he'll be here for finance. Okay, um, so, uh, anyone else have any questions or comments for Dr. McKinney? No? Okay, well, Dr. McKinney, I wanted to thank you for highlighting um those success stories of um some of our students. Um, that's always so exciting and nice to hear um when our students are doing exceptionally well. Um, we have a broad pool of talent here in Nashua um and I'm so glad to see it being recognized on a statewide basis. Um, the other question that I had for you um was, oh, and I'm so excited about the electric car. That's so cool. Um, I kind of like want to go visit while they're doing it, so you and I will chat about that later. Maybe we can observe. Um, the COVID vaccinations, um, some schools were able to schedule like a pod at the school to vaccinate their teachers. Is there any chance of that happening here in Nashua?
Uh, two things. One, uh, in regards to the superintendent's comments, I just want to say a quick thank you to Stacy Hines, who helps out with all the good news to share. Uh, secondly, I don't know all the vaccine lingo and the pods, but I've been on a number of state and city calls and we're working directly with them to do a school staff vaccination on a weekend. They're hoping to do about 2,000 people per day. That would include some of the private and charter schools too, but keeping it to Nashua. Uh, we're hoping to do that within the next two weeks. So when I have more information, I'll certainly share with you.
That's what I meant. So that's fantastic. I'm so excited to hear that. All right. Um, did anybody else have any other questions? Right, then I think uh we can move on to the student member comments. And um I understand that Mr. Dunn and Ms. Brunel um have done another um informal survey and that they have a presentation for us, so I'm excited to see that.
Yes, I will share that now. There we go. And can everyone see the presentation? Also, I can't see any, uh, I can't see anyone when I present, so is everyone, can everyone see the presentation?
Yes, great. Um, thank you very much. It took a second. Um, and then.
I think, I think my computer glitched out at first.
Again, I'm going to ask people to save their questions or comments um until you're finished with your presentation um so that I can see people and call on them in order. Go ahead, Mr. Dunn and Ms. Brunel.
Okay, so uh we started this uh Google form. We tried to get it out by Tuesday, coming back from fabrication, and we opened it until earlier today. So students had from Tuesday to um about four o'clock today to answer the Google form. Oh, oh, it's, my computer's very slow today. There we go. So the student survey had 532 responses. We had nine questions. And the surveys were available through the Google Classroom, email, and social media. So the Google Classroom was put up by our activity directors, Ms. Cox and Mrs. Flanagan, and that also sent out an email to all students. And then we, I reached out to each uh, or for National North, we had reached out to the National North Instagram page and had linked the survey in the bio and story of the Instagram.
And in addition to the student survey, we also decided that we were to create a Google form for the teachers. So in total, we had a collective number of 120 responses with 11 questions each and the surveys were available through direct email and which were provided by Ms. Flanagan and Ms. Cox.
So the first question that we had asked was rate your transition to hybrid um one out of five. So one being uh not pleasant and five being very good. So we, on the left, we can see a graph that compiled the data, positive and negative. Um, so the positive was four and five, the negative would be rated one and two, and neutral would be three. So if we look at the left, we can see that um about 18% of students said that their transition to hybrid was negative. About 20, 20 to 25% of students rated it neutral and over 55% rated it positive. Um, and then we can see that teachers were a little more neutral, not as positive as students, but also going back, were not um overly negative. And then on the right, I have a um graph that shows the percentages for how many people, students or teachers, out of the sample size voted one, two, three, four, or five on their transition to hybrid. So if we can look, the highest number for students were four out of five and the highest number for teachers were three out of five. So teachers were nor, were more neutral than students on their transition to hybrid, but both were positive over negative going into hybrid learning.
And in terms of the qualitative results, on the top is the results of the teachers. So on the left are the pros of the transition and on the right are the cons. So just a couple of the pros included the consistency of the fully remote schedule, the gradual adjustment to the new system, and teaching on a singular platform. And on the last bullet point, you can see a capital F and R, which stands for fully remote teachers, and that's what they reported. And as for the cons, teachers reported that they had a difficult time trying to maintain the equal distribution of attention to online and in-person students. Additionally, the short duration of classes made it difficult for teachers to fit in their entire schedule that they had planned initially for the class. And then finally, the constant use of computers was um, didn't bode as well, I guess you could say, just because students were sitting in the same classroom with teachers, but they were still looking at or active on Zoom, so it kind of negated the fact that they were in person. But in terms of the students' results, on the bottom, you can see that they were very pleased to be surrounded by teachers and their friends and that in-person schooling engendered a sense of normalcy. Finally, it was easier to focus because of the presence of others. And then on the cons, students had a difficult time adjusting to the new schedule and the cafeteria was not, cafeteria setting was not ideal. And then finally, a majority of students are still on Zoom whilst teaching in the classroom, which is similar to what the teachers had reported.
Um, the next question we have is we asked students and teachers to rate their safety in school one out of five. And what we can see is it's overwhelmingly positive. Both students and teachers felt very safe coming back to school. Over almost 75% for students and well over 50% for teachers felt very safe coming back. And then on the right, we can see that the um highest rating for students was five out of one, so they were very confident in coming back, and teachers were four out of five. Um, so we can look at this and see that students were a little more positive in um their safety, but teachers were also very positive in their safety returning hybrid. The next question we asked, which had come up a few times in the board meeting, was has your mental health improved during hybrid? And we can see that on 46.2% of students had their, said that their mental health had improved and 49.5% of teachers said their mental health had improved. And I view that as a huge win. We can have 46.2% of our school population saying that their mental health has improved and same, almost half of teachers said that their mental health has improved. I view that as a great win for our student body and it adds more motivation and easier when teaching. And I think that is great and a great outcome of hybrid learning.
And then in terms of the mental health for the teachers, they liked the ability to see students in person and they felt more connected to those around them. And finally, being able to fully engage with students was very motivational for them as teachers. And then on the downside, they felt that the mental health of full remote teachers remained the same and stagnant while um they also reported that their stress levels have risen just because they're trying to balance both the education of online and remote, online and hybrid students. And then they felt as though there's little preparation time to plan for both the curriculums of both um groups of students. And then in terms of the students, they felt that their ability to learn has improved and they enjoy seeing familiar faces and they feel more motivated to do their work. And then they said that their mental, some said that their mental health hadn't changed. I believe that those students were fully remote. And then some were so worried or had concerns about getting COVID. And then finally, students are getting less sleep because of the new schedule and that's all.
The next question we asked were, um, did remote students or when remote, because even if you're hybrid, you're remote two out of the four days, or felt equally attended to compared to in-person students? And we can see that 54.7% said they were, about the 18 and a half were other responses. That included that um they felt the same, uh, or they felt that they were a little less so, but not as rascally enough to say they were not equally attended to. And we see that um a little over a quarter of the school population said they were not well-attended to when um remote.
So in terms of the students, they felt as though the teachers are doing a great job connecting the entire classroom despite the difference in location and the teachers are always available to assist the students. And they also liked that the information was uniform between remote students and hybrids. And then on the con side, they felt that more conversation took place in the classroom rather than on Zoom. And they didn't have the opportunity to speak to teachers one-on-one, such as at the end of class, when they still had like other questions or wanted to schedule other time because other kids could hear those conversations. And then finally, remote students had a difficult time getting in in contact with teachers during the Zoom class just because sometimes the teachers could be away from the computer or speaking with their children in class.
And the last question we asked, if we, we asked that, did teachers feel like they had an adequate amount of resources for hybrid? And we can see that 45.5% said yes, 36.4% said no, and about 18.2% said other. And in part, this uh a major reason why stu, teachers said no or other was because they felt like they couldn't adequately talk to both um students in classroom and students at home together. That was a big thing that we had, a big theme that we had seen over and over again and the why teachers didn't feel like they had enough resources or why, or teachers were saying that they felt they were spread thin between online and in-person students.
And then finally, the teachers reported that the distribution of computers and projectors was more than adequate as students had access to Chromebook and they also had access to the laptops as well. And then finally, they said that um the access to online resources was also of much help too. Resources such as actively learned that wouldn't normally be available to them were very helpful in the transition. And then on the um con side, some students didn't have access to headphones, so when they were in the cafeteria, um, the sound of their classroom, the sound of some classes was disruptive to other students. And then the cameras on computers posed as a minor challenge just because the camera's so small. So when teachers were teaching on the board, it was difficult to see what they were writing. And then they felt as though, again, that they were not properly trained on how to teach online and hybrid.
And that concludes our presentation and we will take any questions.
All right, thank you, um, Ms. Brunel and Mr. Dunn. Um, that was.
Um, that was lovely, and I really appreciate the effort that you guys took and all of the, um, students and teachers who took the time out to respond, um, to your questions about how their transition went. Um, so thank you so much for sharing that with us. And just for the public's knowledge, um, Mr. Dunn has emailed that presentation to us so that we can, I'm saying us, but it's really Dr. McKinney, uh, so that it can be, um, posted along with the meeting minutes for tonight on our website, um, when those go up, so that if anybody in the public wants to look at the slides more closely, um, that will be up on the website shortly, within the, I think, within five days. Um, okay, any questions or, um, comments to, uh, Mr. Dunn and Ms. Brunel? Wow, nobody has any questions, so well done, you guys. It looks like you answered them all. All right, thank you so much for taking the time out. Did either of you have any other updates that you wanted to share with us beyond your presentation?
Yeah. I just had two in our CTE program, a couple of students reached out. And their first concern was that, um, prior to the hybrid model, they had the ability to go in person and then learn, um, participate in the CTE program. Yes, are you able to hear me?
Now I can hear you. Your, your screen has frozen, but I can hear you.
Back as well. Ms. Dunn, would you like to go first?
Uh, yeah, I, I can go. I think she was saying that, um,
Yes, we can hear you now, Ms. Brunel.
Okay, as I was saying, sorry about the internet connection, but as I was saying, kids who were participating in CTE programs prior to the hybrid model, they had the ability to go into class and then participate in person. But now with the hybrid, if kids were signed up for fully remote schedules, they don't have that ability anymore, and I know that was upsetting to some kids because they questioned why they can't go back when they already were.
Hmm, okay, uh, thank you, Ms. Brunel. Um, Mr. Parker and Dr. McKinney, uh, will look into that for us. And you, you said you had two things? Oh, I think we lost her. Okay, Mr. Dunn, why don't you jump in while we wait for her to come back?
Uh, yeah, I can jump in. So a hybrid student, I think that it has gone very well. The transition to hybrid, um, has gone great in the classroom. The, uh, the hallways are not crowded at all. It seems very safe. Everyone's been wearing their mask. Everyone seems very happy to be back. And I know I've been great. I can say that, you know, coming back from my first day in school in a long time felt very good. And it, even, I have one teacher that's remote, and in the classroom or in the cafeteria, it's been going okay. Uh, I really have no complaints about being back. So I think growing back in hybrid was definitely a great, great thing that happened.
Great, thank you, Mr. Dunn. And I see Ms. Brunel is back. Um, did you have a second thing? I heard about the CTE. What was your second item, Ms. Brunel?
All right, the second item was just in regards to health sciences and the LNA. So, um, I believe, um, some students were concerned with having to pay an additional five hundred dollars just because the school reported that they weren't in school. So therefore, they wouldn't be able to obtain their LNA. And that was all.
Okay, so, um, again, I'll ask Dr. McKinney and Mr. Parker to look into that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Um, sorry, I just wanted to write that down because I like to take notes. Um, so, um, the next item is the Committee on Budget. Um, I see Mr. Donovan's name is back. Um, so I wondered if, um, Ms. Brown, was it Ms. Brown? Uh, who had the question about, um, meals, wanted to ask Mr. Donovan that before budget. I'm sorry, budget is not finance. Mr. Guarino, I skipped right over you. I apologize. Go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
That's okay. I'll, I'll just be real quick, uh, to tell, uh, just to say that our budget committee meets on Wednesdays at six P M. Um, we met last Wednesday. We're going to be meeting this Wednesday. Last Wednesday, we, we had some really good presentations, um, technology, plant operations, and the CTE career and technical education. This Wednesday, we will be discussing special education, ELL, and transportation. And that's really all I have for, for budget.
Um, thank you, Mr. Guarino. Um, and, um, for our budget meetings, those, we don't take public comments because we'll have a public hearing, um, towards the end, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, but people are able to watch it on, um, Channel ninety-nine or the E T V website. Um, and, um, I forget where I was going. Oh, and everything is posted on our website, um, like all of our other committees. So, um, now finance and operations. Um, and, um, I thought perhaps we could circle back to Ms. Brown's question about the meals that I don't think Mr. Donovan heard, um, because he got kind of frozen and kicked out. Mr. Donovan, are you here again?
Yes, I'm here. I'm trying to keep the, I have internet issues, so I'm trying to keep the picture off.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Uh, so my question was, um, was that, are we offering free lunches for all students, um, whether they are on the free lunch registration program or not?
Yes, that, that will last through August of, uh, two thousand twenty-one.
Excellent. I hope a lot of kids take care of it. And I also, what, I don't know if you heard, we also made a reminder to, for people to fill out their forms so that we can make sure that it's properly financed.
Yes, that would be very helpful.
Okay, um, thank you, Ms. Brown. That's important information for everybody out there to have. Um, so finance and operations, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you very much. We had a meeting on February ninth, two thousand twenty-one, and I'm going to make a recommendation to accept the athletic training coverage contract at both the Nashua High, uh, schools from August twenty twenty-one to June twenty twenty-four. Account nine, one dot nine, one, zero, three, zero, four, one, four, zero, eight, five, three, six, two, eight. Second.
Okay, so the motion was by Ms. Johnson, uh, seconded by Ms. Oden, um, regarding the athletic training contract. Did anyone have any questions or comments about that? No? Okay. When you're ready, Ms. Bishop?
Sorry, who motioned and then seconded?
Yeah, uh, Ms. Johnson, Ms. Johnson and then Ms. Oden.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, um, so Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Giglio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Uh, Ms. Timmons just, uh, let me know that she stepped away for a minute, but she will return.
Okay, well, motion passes eight to zero.
Um, I'm going to make a recommendation to award the flooring contracts to Nashville Wallpaper for Nashua High School's South Media Center in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. Cadoza flooring for Nashua High School North Auditorium for eighteen thousand, fifty-eight dollars and eighty cents, and Cadoza flooring for Amherst Street Media Center for twelve thousand, three sixty-four, ninety-five cents, not to exceed any of the amounts, funding from the deferred maintenance account. Second. And I'd like to speak on this, please.
Yes, go ahead. Ms. Bishop, did you get that? The motion was by Ms. Johnson, seconded by Ms. Oden.
Yes, I had my notes ready to go this time.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Johnson. Thank you.
I'm going to vote against this because these contracts are over ten thousand dollars. We did not get to see the contracts or any of the bids. Um, and I think it's very important for all of us, um, to read the bids, make sure that we're getting what, um, the proper amount to see who's come in, and it hasn't been done. And I've requested, and I know tomorrow's meeting, I'm going to have a couple of comments about the fact that, again, we didn't get to see the bids. We are board, and we're entitled to see the bids, and I've asked for the bid, so I am not voting for this at this point in time. Over ten thousand dollars, three bids, have the right to see them, rather than someone saying, I'm making the decision for the board. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Did anyone have any questions or comments about that?
If I could just comment on that, we did get bids. We didn't give the actual bids to the board, but Mr. Smith got bids. He listed the three companies we got bids, and he listed the amounts. So just want to make sure people understand that.
Um, Mr. Donovan, I thought that he only listed each company that he picked, not the bids, not all the companies.
No, he did. There's quotes listed in the, uh, it's in the packet, and it was in the packet on that night.
Okay, I have to go back to that, and that's been a while ago. But I asked, I'm asking for us to see the bids. I think we have the right to see the bids and have, vote on the bids and discuss the bids.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mr. Donovan, and, um, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Uh, Ms. Johnson, just to be clear, are you asking for the actual bid contracts paperwork like we get at the J S S B C?
Yeah.
Um, instead of just the amounts?
Yep, because we should be reading them, looking them over to make sure that everyone is giving us the same bids and seeing the amounts. That's the way a bid process works.
Okay, I, I'm sure that we can communicate that to, um, Mr. Smith.
I did. Thank you.
Okay. Um, any other questions or comments about, um, Ms. Johnson's motion? No, I just want to thank Ms. Johnson for bringing, uh, that to the board, even though, um, she doesn't feel like she wants to vote for it at this time. Um, I appreciate that you, um, are bringing it to the board to make the decision, um, as chair of your committee. So thank you for that. Um, okay, Ms., uh, Bishop?
Okay, on Ms. Johnson's motion, uh, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Giglio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
No.
And has Ms. Timmons come back yet?
Yes.
Yes, hi. Okay, motion passes, uh, seven to two.
Thank you. I'll write, make a recommendation to approve the contract with Allied Universal for three-year service agreements for all security equipment at a hundred thousand, three hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six cents per year, count number ninety-one dot one dot two, 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 six, two, zero, five, three, six, two, eight. Second.
Okay, the motion was by Ms. Johnson, seconded by Ms. Oden. Um, Ms. Johnson, did you have, uh, any, um, comments about this one?
No, I'm just not going to support it.
Okay, um, I do have a question. Did anyone else have any questions? Um, uh, go ahead, Ms. Seem.
Uh, I, I just, are we saying that she didn't see these contracts either?
I don't remember. This is, I'm trying to think back. We saw part, we did see it. It did give the information, but we only saw it from Allied. That was it.
You saw one of three.
I don't remember there being any, any other contracts. Mr. Donovan, was there any additional contracts?
Not on this one, because this is the firm we use to put all the equipment in.
So, so my question was, I, this is a, like a continuation of the services that they have been providing for us?
Yes, this, we just finished, we'll finish as of June two thousand twenty-one, the first three-year contract, and this is a second three-year contract.
If we were to change the vendor, would that mean having to change the equipment as well?
Down the line, potentially, not immediately, but down the line, potentially, yes.
Okay, that sounds expensive. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? No? Okay, uh, Ms. Bishop, if you could call a roll?
Uh, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Giglio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Did you say yes? Oh, yeah, okay. Um, and Timmons?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes eight to one.
I'm going to make a recommendation to accept and place on file the F Y twenty-one, January twenty twenty-one transfer report.
Uh, any questions or comments about the transfer report? Um, no? Okay, uh, Ms. Bishop? Uh-oh. I think we just lost Ms. Bishop. We're having a tough night tonight. Um, okay, I don't have the order. Um,
No, I'm back.
Oh, yeah, you're back. Good, because I don't have the order. I should have that. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
You don't have it memorized by yet? No, I'm just kidding. I don't either. Uh, I just know I'm first. Ms. Bishop votes yes. Uh, Ms. Giglio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Johnson, do you have anything else for us this evening?
Now that ends my reports.
Okay, thank you so much. And are we, are you meeting tomorrow night?
Yes, we are. Tomorrow's the ninth.
Okay, um, I just wanted to highlight on that the Eagle Scout project because I always think that is so great when, um, we get those. So if anybody wants to tune in for that, that would be interesting.
We'll see everybody tomorrow night. A matter of fact, I believe we're meeting at five o'clock tomorrow instead of six.
Okay, uh, thank you, Ms. Johnson.
You're welcome.
Okay, Committee on Policy, Ms. Bishop?
So we met, um, on February sixteenth. We discussed two policies, and I, um, am making a motion to approve policy B C A, School Board Member Ethics As Amended.
I'll second that. Oh, Mr. Timmons, was that you?
Oh.
We'll take Ms. Timmons.
Okay. Comments, questions?
Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I'd like to make a comment on number sixteen, which I had a problem with even the night of the policy. No board member of the Nashua School District shall accept any gratuity gift or favor that might impair or appear to influence professional decisions or actions. I think, well, first of all, the city has a form that you have to, you're supposed to be filling out every year if you're taking any gifts, anything, I believe, if it's still over ten dollars. And you're supposed to be filling that out. Um, well, and when you say gift or favor, I think you can, and we, the word donation also should be in there because donations can be given anytime during the year that they can give in case you want to run for office again. You put it into an account, and if you decide you don't want to run, you can give the money out to anybody you want. But I think it needs to be on there when it says all of this because I think all of us, before we take a vote on any contract, we should divulge whether or not we got union money prior to, because that's a question of a vote. And I said that when I was on the Board of Ed, the last time, I said that when I was on the Board of Alderman, and I said that after I stepped down. I mean, it has to come out, and people have to see if any special interest or any union has given you money during a campaign or during the year. So I think that needs to be amended and added into that last sentence because then that talks about, does it appear, the appearance, impair or appear to influence. So I think donations should be in there, and you should have to acknowledge whether or not you've taken any special interest money during the course of the year prior to. That's called ethical, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Brown?
Um, I actually appreciate, I, I think we worked really hard on this document, and I think it's really good, but I agree with Ms. Johnson's point. Um, I think it's a good one, and I'd like to move to amend the policy at number sixteen to say no board member, no board member of the Nashville School District shall accept any gratuity gift or favor. at number 16 to say no board member, no board member of the Nashville School District shall accept any gratuity gift or favor, gratuity gift, favor, or campaign contribution that might impair or appear to influence professional decisions or actions. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
And if I could speak to it for a minute?
Go ahead.
And I think, I'm not, I think that that actually protects us from, because it says that might impair or appear to influence professional decisions or actions. It doesn't prevent you from actually accepting a campaign contribution, which was one of the arguments against it. It would be, you know, it can't, it can't influence your actions. If you take money from somewhere, you have to be ethical and ultimately rise above those contributions. So if that's not the option, there was something that we took out of the old policy, and I'm not moving to change this, but this would be another option. Avoid being placed in a position of conflict interest, refrain from using my board positions for personal or partisan gain. So that would be another option is taking that line back from the previous policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any discussion about Ms. Brown's amendment? Ms. Zim, and then Mr. Guarino?
I, I have a real struggle with this because I think we're trying to play conscience. I would suggest to you that there is nobody on this board who hasn't taken a donation for their campaign from somebody. If there is, it would only be maybe one that I can think of, and even that one, I would doubt that not, no donation of any kind. And it goes to the basic premise that we are a divided nation. You have, you know, so, so one person takes donations from Republicans, another takes from Democrats. And what is the difference? Those are, those are the same thing, because obviously each of those parties subscribe to a different set of basic tenants. So, and I, I, I got, I got a lot of grief over the fact that I took union money this, this time. Last time I lost because of the union. So the union clearly knows, in fact, they wanted me to sign a document wherein I said that I would not oppose the custodians in any shape or form, that I would unequivocally agree to anything they wanted. And I said, no, I can't sign that. I can't, what am I doing, selling my conscience to you? I, I don't want to take your contract. I, I, I'm happy with the custodians, but I want you to be reasonable. I want you to work with us because we, we have to work as a team. And they said, no, if you don't sign this, we're not going to support you. So I, so I lost last time, as most people know. I didn't get any grief about that, but the next time they decided they liked me and they supported me, and so they gave me a check. And, and I took the check. And I'm not, because I believe that the union knows that my, my vote is not for sale. I am who I am. I vote my conscience, has nothing to do with money. And I, and I have to tell you that I, that I feel offended when somebody else tries to get inside my soul and my conscience and be my conscience for me. There is nobody who will be any harder on me than I am on myself. And when, when it, if that's not the case, all the jumping on top of me is not going to change me. If, if I, if I'm for sale, you're not going to stop me from selling myself. So I won't vote for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zim. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I agree with Ms. Zim. Disclosure is already required, so if anyone takes any campaign money, it doesn't matter if it's from a union or not. They have to disclose it, so it's, it's at City Hall. For all, all our elected officials, we can see where they got their campaign money from. It doesn't matter if whether it's from a union or not. I also took teacher union money. And I'm pro-union. My father was a Teamster. I think this is specifically, this, this amendment is specifically trying to target teachers' unions. And as Ms. Zim said, it's not just unions that give campaign contributions, it's all around, all political parties do it. And I don't think there's anyone on this board, including myself, who, who would take money as a favor to, to influence decisions. I know I've butted heads with the unions, even though they supported me, and I butted head with teachers. And, and I'm not afraid to tell them, you know, you need to back off. I've done it. So I'm not going to support this. And I, I don't think it's necessary. And I think it's just, just trying to target teachers' unions, and, and I, I think it's wrong. And it could come back. It's a double-edged sword, you know, it could come back to harm people, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Ms. Gilio?
Hi, I, I have a question based on, on this, this conversation and based on recommendations that were made on finance and operations by Ms. Johnson. I mean, I'm still pretty new to this, but my understanding was that we have committees so that they can do the vetting, so that they can look at the proposals, find out everything that needs to be known about them, and then make a recommendation to us. Otherwise, all nine of us would be sitting in on every single committee meeting, or our meetings would be really lengthy if we had to discuss all these details every time they came up. So I'm a little confused that the Committee on Finance made recommendations and then Ms. Johnson chose not to support them. And I'm a little confused why, if this is what the Policy Committee felt, felt was the appropriate policy, why we're now discussing it again, since it's come from, and maybe I'm not understanding how the committees are supposed to work. That's possible, but maybe someone could enlighten me on that. Thank you.
Can I make, can I, can I answer that, please?
Wait, wait one second. So I just wanted to, procedurally, Ms. Johnson did the right thing because her committee voted to advance it to the board. She presented it to us. However, now she's got her chair hat off and her board member hat on. And as a board member, she voted against it because that was, I assume, her conscience on it. We can all do that. When you're the Chair of a committee, you have to abide by what your committee votes, even if you disagree with it. As far as wordsmithing here, I hate it. I don't think it should happen. I think if people have problems, you do it in committee. But I can't stop people from making amendments or wordsmithing at the full board. So this has been a conversation that this board has had for years and years and years.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, did you have something else to add regarding?
Yes, I, yes, I do, you know, and thank you for the explanation of what you can do in the committee and what you can do at the full board. And I try, you know, I think about it, whether it's conscience or not, but I did get some legal opinions that I did send over to Ms. Raymond about some of the bids and some other things that I went and spoke with, had attorney clerk give me. I questioned number 16 at the Policy Committee meeting. And Ms. Raymond, you have to let me know if I'm going to be a regular on the policy or I'm going to be the alternate, because I came in the last time, kind of like it's the alternate, but I wanted to hear what was going on with this. I do have issues with number 16. I mean, I guess the question, did anybody on the board take any gifts or any gratuity or, or anything during this course of the year? Did we file with the city that we're supposed to? I didn't take anything. I didn't get any union money. I wouldn't accept any union money. They don't want my opinion anyway, and that's fine. I don't have that problem. But disclosure is a very big thing, and this is why we run into problems because of disclosure. So we're doing something here, we're putting here that the city already requires to be done. So either you could take this out and just let the city handle this, that we're supposed to fill out the form every year, just like you fill out your form when you run for office, that has to be handed in, to be recorded when you run, two reportings, and every year you do this reporting, or you leave it in here and we self-govern ourselves. But I do have a little bit of a problem. I want to make sure that every I is dotted and every T is crossed here. And I did have this problem with number 16, and I did bring it up in the committee. And, you know, when it goes from the committee to the full board, the members of the full board still has the right to ask questions on what's going on in the committee, and that's the way it works on a board. So I have a problem with number 16. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Odin?
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. I have run three times. I've been fortunate that I've been able to finance my own campaign. I've never taken a penny from anybody. But anybody in the city or outside the city can go to the city website and see every candidate's financial sheet and how much money they received and from whom it came from. So I think this is redundant. If somebody's interested, they can go to the city website and, and go through everybody's documents that they have to submit to the city clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Odin. I, I'd like to say something on this very briefly, and it's, it's two things. This is a nonpartisan board. We don't have Rs or Ds or Is next to our names. We're not supposed to be representing one political party or another when we're here. We're supposed to be doing what we each think is best for the, the community and the district. That's kind of our role here. Two other things. One, running a political campaign even at this level can be expensive. I know I spent, I think, like $500 on signs to have signs up around. Not everybody who wants to run for the board has, you know, the, the ability to self-finance that. That's a lot of money, and I don't think that we should preclude people from doing it. And third, someone had said that if you take donations, you can do whatever you want with them if you decide not to run or whatever, and that's just patently untrue. When you run and you want to accept donations, you have to create another account. It's not your personal money, it's your campaign's money. So you have to register with the IRS and create an account specifically for your campaign. And then there are federal laws that govern what you can and cannot do with that money. You can either spend it on campaign items, which you have to report to the city as well. Or if you decide not to run, or if you have excess donations, you can only contribute it to other people running for another office or your office if you decide not to run, or donate it to charity. You cannot keep it and do what you want with it. It's not your money. It's money for your campaign only. And so it's early to be talking about election season, but that's pretty much what this amendment, I think, goes to. And so people should know that you can't just take a check from somebody and put it in your own personal bank account. That's against the law, so don't do that. So moving on, does anyone else have a comment? Ms. Timmons?
Yes, I've taken union money for all union money, SEIU, NTU, AFLC, all different type of unions, as well as private people. So I got money from private individuals and unions and organizations that went into account that I had to document every single thing. Money that I didn't use did go to other people's campaign, but it wasn't to buy any votes or anything like that, because I believe one way, and you can't change the way I feel regardless of who gave me money, whether it's SEIU or NTU. I am who I am, or whether individual. So to imply that any union is by any of us is absurd, and I resent that. So I'm telling you, if I run again, I will accept campaign money. That was four years ago. I haven't accepted anything in the last four years during the, during my tour of my time in, on the board, not one single penny. It was prior to me running for this position. And I could not afford to run on my own. People helped me. And I will help someone else if they want to run for the Board of Education, and any money that I have. And I, and you think the way I think, I will give you those funds. So, and it's not because I want you to vote the way I would vote. I vote the way I vote because it is my conscience. I will never support something like that, because that's right. Everybody get donations from somewhere. Look, people will leave office and still ask them for donation. Really? Come on, be for real. Still asking for donation after they left the office. So I, I can't support that. I think it's a circus. Somebody think that the union is by any of us, because I don't think that's happening.
Thank you, Ms. Timmons. Ms. Brown, one minute. I just want to give everybody a chance to speak before we go round ten seconds. Dr. McKinney and Ms. Bishop?
Thank you, Madam President. I would just ask the board to keep in mind that as educators, we're responsible to the district professional ethics and the state board of New Hampshire Code of Ethics and Conduct. And we're looking to hold each other accountable and we're accountable to the state. So I know this conversation has took a number of different turns, but in the end, we're looking for all of us to be the model for the district and for our educators and ethical behavior and holding one another accountable, regardless of partisan background or whatever, and doing the very best thing for our kids, teachers, staff and community. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney. Ms. Bishop?
I just wanted to, I, I kind of agree with what everybody's saying. I think we have to remember that when we're accepting funds as candidates, we're not accepting funds as board members, and they're two very different roles. What number 16 says is as a board member, we're not accepting all of this stuff with our board member hats on, and I think we can use some common sense in recognizing when we're running for office and when we're working. Like what other people have said, those funds go into different accounts, they're regulated by federal standards. We should not accept gifts as board members. I think we all are fully aware of the difference between a campaign contribution and a gift. So I hope we can move on and, and vote on this pretty soon.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Background to Ms. Brown.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I know you guys are probably seeing me smirking. I have, I took campaign contributions as well. I think the key in this is not, that's not even what I, when I added that in there, it was more to give us all guidance and, because eventually the next page that we're going to vote on is that we're going to sign and agree to this. That we're going to say, yeah, you know what, it doesn't actually say you can't accept any gifts. It says you can't accept any gifts that might impair or appear to influence your decisions. So I'm just saying, if you accept a gift, don't let it influence your decisions. It doesn't actually prevent you from accepting them unless you let it influence your choices. That's how I am interpreting this anyway. I don't think it targets any specific union. I don't think it specifics any individual contributions. I don't think it targets any Republicans or Democrats or Libertarians or anything else. It doesn't, it's not a target, that concept is not targeting any one group of people. It's making a conscious effort for all, all to rise above our partisanship to make good, quality, clean, fair decisions. So honestly, I'm not going to hold up this document for this, and if you want, I'll withdraw the motion, but I'm also okay with just voting on it. I mean, I don't think it's going to pass, so we might as well move on.
Okay.
Sorry, if I could say just one thing, but I think it was misinterpreted. The intent was not to target any specific group or partisanship at all. It's saying that we shouldn't be partisan when making decisions. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, Ms. Brown. And it sounds like from the discussion here tonight, that all nine of us are in agreement with what you just said, that we need to be independent of influence when we are making decisions. So let's go ahead and vote on the amendment and then vote on the motion. So on the amendment, does anyone need Ms. Brown or Ms. Bishop to repeat it? Ms. Gilio is saying yes, she would like it repeated.
Do you want me to say it? All right. No board member of the Nashville School District shall accept any gratuity gift, favor or can, campaign contribution that might impair or appear to influence professional decisions or actions.
All right, so the vote is on that motion, which adds a few words or a couple of words to number 16. Go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so on the motion to amend number 16, Ms. Bishop votes no. Ms. Gilio?
I'm not going to vote at this time.
Okay. Ms. Raymond?
No.
Ms. Odin?
No.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
No.
Oh. Ms. Seem?
No.
Ms. Timmons? One, two, three, four, five, six. Motion fails. Six to three with one abstaining. Oh, that map doesn't work.
Two yes, six no, one absentee.
Sorry.
Ms. Gilio wanted to add.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, so back to the original motion, which is to approve the the policy as it was presented to us in our packet.
Would they read it again, please, then?
The, it's the entire ethical thing here. Does that clarify it, Ms. Seem?
No, it's all right. It's all right.
Okay. I'll have Ms. Bishop.
So on the motion to approve a policy BCA, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Oh, I got the giggles. Ms. Johnson?
No.
Okay. Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
And Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Okay. That motion passes eight to one. The next, let me see if I can start my video again. Sorry. The next most, the next policy that we reviewed was policy BCAR, which is the the sign-off sheet stating that we would agree with the policy that just passed. So that's, I motion to approve BCAR.
I second that. Seconded by Ms. Timmons.
Okay. Discussion, comments, concerns?
I don't see anybody, so go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
Okay. Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Oden?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yeah. Yeah, yes, yeah.
Motion passes eight to one. And that is it for our Committee on Policy. Our next one is March 16th. We had a lengthy discussion, obviously, about these two policies that we're talking about now. I would love it if the same people could show up so we could continue, because I think the policies that we're reviewing next time around kind of bleed into each other, so we'll be a bit more planful and manage our time a little bit better, but we have some things to do. Thank you.
Bishop? Okay, Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation. Ms. Brown?
Thank you, Madam President. So we met on February 15th, and our next meeting is March 15th. And we have two recommendations this evening. The first one, I moved to approve the 2021-2022 Middle School Social Studies pilot.
I second that.
And we did have a few questions come in from the community over the last 24 hours after it already gone through committee. So if I don't know, would either of the vice, the superintendents want to speak to any of those questions that came in from the community, or you want me to bring something up about it?
Yes, Dr. McKinney. And then, I'm sorry, Dr. Andre as well. I don't know which one of you.
My second back on that.
Sure, Ms. Timmons?
Clarification on the 2122 Social Studies pilot. I had some questions on it. So maybe Dr. McKinney can clarify those questions for me.
Okay. Did you want to let them speak to the emails that were received first, or did you want to ask the questions first?
No, first, because it may come up in the email. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. McKinney, did you want Dr. Andre, or did you want to handle it? Or both?
I'll go first and then certainly turn it over to Dr. Andre. This certainly is a resource pilot. It's a company that we've used before that works across New Hampshire. There is some professional learning included, just like with our strategic plan, the end game is to have competency-based learning K to 12. So the middle school is one area that is still traditionally traditional-based grading. So we're looking to kind of bridge the gap between elementary and high school. It is also a cost-saving proposal. We're all looking to save $35,000 instead of renewing the subscription we traditionally do for middle school and piling some new up-to-date materials that curriculum places from 2015. It does include a number of meetings and discussions with grade levels, the Social Studies Department, and the director there, who's worked with the 70, 60 teachers at the elementary level for 75 hours, is really a teacher whisperer. She worked together with groups to get work done. And while I don't want to take away from the expertise that our middle school social studies teachers have and present on a daily basis for our kids, it's certainly refreshing to have somebody come in from the outside who knows what's going on in New Hampshire, their model competencies at work, and really help be a level of, provide a level of continuity across the districts. We're all talking the same talk and walking the same walk, so that we're in alignment K to 12. Dr. Andre, do you want anything to that?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. McKinney. Just to add to your comments, this is just the start of the process. So we know that the teacher's voice is keenly important in this process. So we know that throughout the process and looking at our standards and looking at resources that we have to trust and hear from our teachers on what works and what doesn't work. If you weren't able to attend the subcommittee meeting, I must commend our Social Studies coach, Joe Johnson, as well as the other instructional leads at the middle school who presented. They did a wonderful job, again, showcasing their expertise and professionalism and research in this project. So again, as Dr. McKinney said, this is really a study about the standards. It's a study on making sure we have the right resources aligned to the standards first. It's not really getting into competency-based education for the assessment, but really for us having rich, deep conversations around what are those grade span expectations the middle school going to be? What resources align? And then how are we going to pilot several resources for next year? So I think, again, this is a real open collaborative process moving forward. I know there was conversations about communication or questions around that, or making sure we had teachers' input, and through the whole process, we'll make sure that there is a lot of ongoing communication and teachers' input to make sure that we have the a high-quality product and resource at the end. The other thing, too, is that when we engaged in this conversation in that presentation that night, there was a lot of questions on making sure that we would incorporate diversity and equity into our middle school curriculum. So I think the timing is correct to address civics and civics education moving forward. So I think the timing is right, is correct right now to move forward in this pilot.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney and Dr. Andre. Ms. Timmons, did that answer your questions, or do you have additional questions?
Yes, one question. How much of a buy-in did the teachers have, the social study teachers specifically?
My understanding is that there were several conversations going back to November and December with middle school teachers and curriculum liaisons. I would say one of the challenges at the middle school is the PLCs, and not all teachers always participating in the PLCs during office hours and helping other student groups. So we do have to find a way to actively communicate with them, but initiating this project doesn't prohibit their participation. In fact, I think it's probably a good idea for them to get together and meet by grade level, meet by department, share their concerns, and the director is a great wealth of information, a great facilitator. And I think if she can get 40 elementary, kindergarten or elementary teachers to agree and have a new report card by the end of the year, she certainly can navigate.
Okay, great. I'm having a list now. I have Ms. Oden, then I have Ms. Gilio, and then I have Ms. Seem.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Wait one second, Ms. Oden. Ms. Timmons, did that answer your question, or did you need further clarification?
Depending on what Ms. Oden's question is.
Okay, I'm sorry. And then Ms. Johnson and Mr. Parker in there somewhere, too.
I received some emails. I received some phone calls. And quite frankly, the teachers, the social studies teachers at the middle school are very disappointed that they didn't know about this. There was a lack of communication. I know this year has been difficult, but it has happened to them in the past. And to have to read it as an item on a board agenda, on a committee agenda, isn't the way it should be. And one of them said to me, we never had one social studies meeting this year. And and they should have been aware of what was coming up. For me, as a former teacher, I think things should be from the bottom up in teaching. I'm, I'm very concerned that they were left out of this. I don't remember too many times when we've paid a consultant for a pilot. And I just think we can do better than this for our, our teachers and for our students. And quite frankly, when I hear the word competencies, hair on my neck goes up. We started competencies in the high school probably five years ago, and we have really never had an update as to whether they have helped or not. I don't know if more students, or fewer students are failing courses due to competencies. And when we were presented this, that was part of it, that these kids that were not doing well could go back and take another test, have a little extra instruction. We had, I forgot the name of that half-hour, 20-minute block of time they had for that reason. And I'll tell you what bothers me. When we looked at pass fail last March, all of the emails we got, I would say 99.5% of them, it wasn't about learning, it wasn't about understanding, it was, I want a good grade to increase my GPA to get into a good college. I just don't know what we're doing with competencies at the high school. I thought when we voted on this, it was for students that were failing and could retake a test so that they could get a passing grade. I'm not sure at this point, from all the emails I got from, I get, I'd say 80 to 100 students. The bulk of them, it was all about their GPAs and getting into a good college. I don't know if students can get a 92 and say, oh, that's not high enough, that's going to ruin my GPA and take another test to get a 98. That's not how I understood it when it was presented to us as a board. So until I get some more information about competency-based grading, I'm not going to support any competency-based grading resolution. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Oden. Ms. Gilio, and then Ms. Seem, and then Ms. Johnson.
Okay. I actually attended the meeting where this was presented. It was the first time that I attended a meeting as a member of the Curriculum Committee. And I did not realize at that time that that there was not more involvement throughout the Social Studies Department. I, like Ms. Oden and like Ms. Timmons, have received a lot of communications from social studies teachers at the middle school level who are very concerned about this and feel like they were not represented and are not sure they will be as this pilot goes on if it's approved. So even though I originally voted to support this in our committee meeting, my tendency tonight would be to vote no. I think there's more, more work to be done. I'm not ready to support it at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Gilio. Ms. Seem?
I will definitely be voting no tonight for several reasons, but the ones I want to mention. The, the, over the 13 or so years that I've been involved with the school district, there are certain teachers who distinguish themselves, who earn trust based on what they bring and give of themselves, the sacrifices they make, that I've seen them make year after year after year. And actually, in my view, when you stand up as they have to voice this concern, they're standing up to their superiors. It takes courage to do that. Not everybody has that courage, is the truth of the matter. And yet, these individuals are tenured people. They're 15, 28-year veterans saying this to me. So I have to weigh that and hold that very heavily. And I, of all the things, I think that's the one thing that stands out most. But the other thing that that I think stands out in this is that it's not a good time to, particularly good time to be launching any new learning, because the teachers have been overwhelmed. They're exhausted. They're drained. They've had a bad year, a demanding year. And to lay a new, new, I don't see why it would hurt to put it off a year and send the message to them that we are listening to them, that we hear what they're saying, and that we do care, that we are from the bottom up, that we're that, so, so I will be voting no, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Seem. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I'm going to agree with my board members. I too got many emails, and I read them very carefully. I agree with Ms. Seem about what the teachers, but I also feel that the students at this point in time, I think we need to know where they are. Are they ready for something new? Do we need to catch them up with what they know right now? So I think that at this point in time, it's not the best of ideas, and I thank all the emails, the teachers who sent emails. It made me open up my eyes. I wasn't at the committee, but I have to trust in the teachers because they're the ones who win the classrooms. So I will not be voting for this tonight either. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I have a procedural question. And that is regarding prior sessions of the board. So back in 2019 December, which was the last normal December before COVID hit, at our December 18th meeting, this, there was a motion approved. I'm just going to read it. So on December 18th, 2019, Mrs. Porter moves, seconded by Mrs. Timmons, to approve the payment of $24,000 to the New Hampshire Learning Initiative for Middle School Competency-Based Education Work over the next two years to be funded by the Title IV grant funds. And that passed seven to one. We had one absentee that evening. So based on that, like, what happens with that motion? Because I believe that starting the process didn't happen because of COVID. So are we, are we asking? Do we have to re-vote on that? Do we have to reconsider the vote that was made last time? Like, to me, I know it's gone all the way back through committee, but work was done on this back in 2019. I don't, I guess I don't have the legal chops to know the answer to that. And I Ms. Brown?
I think the motion would still stand, but I think it maybe hasn't been prioritized in our Curriculum Evaluation Committee meetings to advance it and the details of it. So if you'd like, I can add that to, make it a priority on our next couple of agendas.
Right. Well, I mean, it was approved at the full board. So Ms. Seem?
I would think that, this is just my opinion, but procedurally, this board, if it was voted on and nothing happened, and this board this board, if it was voted on and nothing happened, and this board votes tonight not to do it, they can clearly do it. There's no damage done because none of the money was spent, is what I'm hearing you saying. It didn't move forward because of the pandemic. A lot of things didn't move forward. A lot of us moved backwards even. So I think that this board is free to make a motion and do whatever the board as the forum decides they want to do.
Okay, Mr. Parker.
Thank you. Can you all hear me? I've been having problems, connectivity problems all evening.
Yes, no, I hear you and I can see.
And so I I don't want to prolong this, but I wanted to echo and what Dr. McKinney, Dr. Andre said. I saw this proposal. Competencies were in the strategic plan. So at some point, I think this work has to be done to be out of alignment. And this is not going to start overnight. I just wanted to, you know, that's something so we can get more feedback and buy in. Uh, if the more teachers, I mean, I know Ms. Johnson worked with PLCs, and she did present to the Social Studies Steering Committee uh, some months ago. Uh, and so nothing was done out of bad faith and to keep people in the dark or out of the loop. And I just wanted to say that, to say that, so we felt this would help us along with competencies since we have it in elementary and we have it at a high school. Okay, and so to some degree, we are out of sync. And so this was an effort to help not just talk about it, but begin a process of doing it, doing it, and more people can get in the process. Okay, nothing precludes more feedback, more input. Okay, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Um, I, Mr. Guarino, one second. Ms. Brown, can you add a discussion of competencies to your queue for our curriculum committee?
Certainly.
NEASK brought it up two years ago when we had the NEASK for the the high schools, and they rated it very highly. Um, but I don't know that we've done an internal review, so.
Absolutely. And and I don't know, I had, well, I I won't speak out of turn. Go ahead. I will certainly add that to agenda and I'll wait my turn.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I'm wondering if this has any, if this has to be done really fast, is any time limit on this? If we can't just table it and send it back to committee? And in that way, administration can get more buy in from the middle school, uh, social study teachers um, and have have more input and feedback from the teachers so that so that when they do present it to the board, we can all be on the same page, teachers and administration and 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 board members. Um, I'm wondering if we should do that, if there's not a great rush to do this. If, I'm not against competencies per se, and I I I I agree with Ms. Odin that sometimes they can be abused by or I I'm not sure if they are abused, but a kid trying to get a ninety eight instead of a ninety six or whatever. But I do know that competencies can be used in in cases where kids are slacking and they, teachers really use them so the kids can catch up when they when, um, because I I've I've seen it when my kids were in school. But but my my problem with this is with buy in from the teachers. And I I'd like to have our our faculty um, and administration on the same page with with the things that were, with these pilot programs and the things that we're implementing. And I'd like to see more input in, uh, on on their behalf. So I'm I'm wondering if we can, we can just table this and just uh, maybe if if there's no big rush to to do it, uh, and then and get everybody on the same page.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Dr. McKinney?
I would agree with Mr. Guarino in that, um, if you could table the motion, but I would ask for the board's support in allowing us to have at least three meetings with each grade level and a department meeting is grade six to eight, and then come to curriculum evaluation with an update relative to this proposal. So you can see and hear from the teachers, we can invite them, and they can tell you exactly where they are in terms of engaging in the work, moving forward with a pilot, moving forward with some professional learning. I I understand it's been a difficult year, but at the same time, it is an opportunity to look ahead, look at some new resources and update our curriculum. Thank you.
Does that require a motion of the board, Dr. McKinney, or is that something where Ms. Brown could just withdraw the motion to approve this pilot and then administratively, you can schedule whatever meetings you want?
That's correct.
Okay, Ms. Dean, and then Ms. Brown.
Well, I just wanted to say that I don't, I don't think this is a reflection on Dr. McKinney or Dr. Andre or Mr. Parker. To be honest with you, this has been, this, that we're even standing after the year we've had. It is 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 a, is a testimony to the strength of the leadership we now see. And and for myself, I can't say enough how pleased I've been with the way we're moving forward. I mean, I I just, um, Mr. McKinney, I I absolutely am very impressed with the leadership that you folks have shown, all three of you. And so I I don't want to, I I just don't want to leave it that you feel like, because it, I I, a lot of this, a lot of this was under other leadership before the three of you took over. So, so I don't think it's a reflection on the three of you, truly, I don't. In fact, I think the way you're handling it shows the character that you have, the principles by which you live, and I appreciate that more than I can say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. And I, I think you reflect the general feeling on the board and our comments this evening. Ms. Brown?
Thank you. Um, so I am going to withdraw the motion in a moment, because I do think it's important that we send this back to committee. But I wanted to clarify a few things about the motion moving forward. So first of all, I have been contacted, we were the people who presented this were PLCs, the the district had been communicating with the social studies department, and they had worked with them to bring it to this level. But I think it's clear to all of us that the teachers don't really feel totally engaged. And I want it when we move forward with it, I want to make sure that we have instructor buy in and district buy in and where it's a team moving forward. So that's why I think it's important to move back to committee. I think the benefit of having a consultant along for the ride is that they can help us analyze the data, and they can actually help facilitate better interactions between those groups of teachers, rather than, um, I think the perception is that the consultant is going to write the curriculum rather than guide our process to find the best fit for our district for and make sure that we're using the best curriculum financially and educationally moving forward. And specifically in the social studies realm, we recently added a few new classes at the high school level. And we know that ultimately, there's a lot of things that need to be updated through text to modernize it and get that moved forward. And it will be really great if we start this process now, so we're not in crunch time when it comes due to open the new middle school. And if we could kind of evolve that simultaneously, that will be good. So while I don't, I kind of agree with Mr. Guarino, this isn't something that needs to be started tomorrow morning. It also should, isn't something that we should put off for two or three years. Just because our curriculum's not expired yet doesn't mean it doesn't bear some evaluation. Um, and finally, I wanted to mention that this particular conversation, while we want to make sure that it aligns, the new curriculum aligns with the competencies that we've accepted and the state guidelines, this is not actually about competency based grading per se, when we're talking about this conversation. Um, and I think one of the things, a few of the things that Ms. Odin and several people, actually, all of us have talked about it at some point, is competency based grading and weighted grade scales and how that turns affects students' intrinsic motivation to learn. So that's not necessarily relevant to the social studies pilot program. But it is definitely a conversation that we're going to be having at the curriculum evaluation level moving forward over the next few months. We're kind of working on that. So just to let you know that they are not they're in, they're connected, but they're not the exact same thing. So is that, can I get a nod from the administrators? That that's a pretty good description. All right. Thank you. All right. So formally, I'd like to withdraw my motion and move that we take this back to the curriculum evaluation committee.
It doesn't require a motion, you can just withdraw. It stays with your committee until you bring it forward again. So you had another item for us regarding Led Street?
Um, yes, thank you. Um, the second recommendation this evening. So I move to approve the proposed Ramapo contract for services with Led Street Elementary School in the amount of thirty five thousand dollars funded by the CSI grant. So we had a really enthusiastic presentation by the Led Street principal, and this goes back to emotional, social emotional learning and support of students on a broad scope and then also helping teachers how, learn how to facilitate that better.
I'll second that. Um, I've heard quite a bit from, um, Mr. Miller over the last couple of years about what the work he's doing at Led Street, and I supported completely. Um, Ms. Julio?
I was gonna second it. I'm very much in favor of it, and and so thank you.
Okay. Um, does anyone have any comments or questions about this motion regarding Led Street? I don't, oh, go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
Just a quick one. Um, I I apologize for not knowing it off the top of my head. Is there any matching funds or measures that we have to meet in order to continue to get this funding?
No, there's no matching funds required.
Okay, and we don't have to meet certain measures in order to keep the whole thing?
Uh, that's correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any other hands. So, um, Ms. Bishop, when you're ready for the roll?
Uh, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Did you hear me?
Yeah.
It was just quiet and I have giggling close to me. Okay, motion passes nine to zero.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Bishop. It is now eight oh three PM. Uh, we're at our two hour limit as required by our policy. Uh, we need to vote if we wish to continue the meeting. I believe this policy might be up for review and policy pretty soon. Um, but in the meantime, I am looking for a vote to continue the meeting. Um, I don't think that we have well, online. I was gonna say, I don't think we have a lot, a lot left, except I do think that the conversation about our meetings might take a little bit. Um, and there is some non-public, um, things that I would like to get to this evening. So I would ask that we make a motion to continue the meeting for at least a half hour, if not longer.
So moved.
How, okay. For half an hour, Ms. Dean, or longer?
As long as it takes.
Okay, Ms. Dean's motion is to continue the meeting. She said as long as it takes, I'm gonna say to finish our agenda.
Yes, that's what I meant. Thank you.
Would anyone like to second that motion?
Mr. Guarino did.
Mr. Guarino, thank you.
All right, on the motion to continue our meeting till the end of our agenda. Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes nine to zero.
Hi, thanks, everybody. I would like to point out that Dr. McKinney and I do make a sincere effort to try and make an agenda that we can fit in the time allowed. It just, we're very chatty. So, um, okay. Um, the next item on the agenda is the Ad-Hoc Committee. Um, Ms. Brown, can you give us a brief update?
Certainly. So, um, we met. I guess we've actually had three meetings. Um, our most recent one was on March third. And we're actually trying to get together, we're trying to coordinate another one for later this week to speak with talk about putting together our focus groups. So the next step in our process that is to put together focus groups, because the priority through this process is to make sure that the board is aligned with district needs and community needs and teacher needs for the best quality leader for our district. So we're going to be having some focus groups that are going to be focused. I should probably think of more vocabulary words. Um, they're going to be focused on making sure it's not on choosing the candidate, it's on defining the characteristics that we want in our candidate. So, um, we have brought a list of about forty six different subgroups and organizations that we're going to be contacting to get, to bring into this. These focus groups, we're going to be having about forty five teachers. The total number of people is around hundred and fifty that are going to be, work with our consultants. So it won't be work getting opinions from board members, it won't be getting opinions from district staff, it'll be the consultants are going to ask the questions and consolidate and take care of these focus groups for us. Um, we're going to have about forty five teachers from all different grade levels. Uh, we're going to be inviting the principals, the paraprofessionals, special ed, guidance, all the different departments in the school. Like, as I said, about forty six, six different organizations, we've, are going to be sending out in the next few days here. So I'd like people to look out for their iNews and also district emails from the board for about twenty five parents who are going to be if people, and non-parent residents of the city to, um, send us in a volunteer form, and by lottery, we're going to choose them for their focus group. So we're trying to do this as evenly and ethically and inclusively as possible. So that'll be the next step. Those focus groups are going to be happening most likely either on March thirtieth or on April first. If we have folks that are interested in being part of those focus groups, but just the lottery doesn't work out in your favor, there's also going to be a large group session, and you can indicate that on your volunteer form. We're going to have a few, um, specific groups for accommodation that are going to have their own focus group, including the Nashua Teachers Union and they, we're going to have Yanni from the ELL Department reach out to that community so that we can accommodate those focus groups if they need any kind of interpretive services. And so that's the next big thing. So watch your emails and please volunteer to be part, give us your opinions. Because then after all that, if you're not selected for a focus group, we're going to be sending out an email that closes that same week. The email's going to be out, going out before that, asking for, it's a survey, asking for community input, because we want everyone's input and information. And because we love Nashua and we want to get the best person for us. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Does anyone have any questions or for Ms. Brown at this time? I know. Okay, uh, thank you so much. All right, the next item is the Committee on Human Resources. Mrs. Dean?
Yes, we met briefly tonight, and the committee is recommending the approval of personnel recommendations dated March eighth, twenty twenty one.
Okay.
Do you need a motion to suspend the rules before we go into that vote?
Yes, please.
I moved to suspend the rules as we did meet earlier today.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm coming, I'm coming.
That's all right, you gotta write it down.
I try to write fast, nobody will ever be able to read my notes.
Your hand.
Maybe some nurses, they're used to scribble. Okay, so Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Dean?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons? Ms. Timmons?
Did you hear that?
No.
Yes.
Got it. Would you just get you like hand signs, you could just put them up for me?
So now I motion.
Yes, so now, now the motion to approve the personnel recommendations, please.
Yes.
Did you get the motion? It's just the March eighth, twenty twenty one? Did you get the motion? It's just the March 8th, 2021 Personnel Recommendations. I need a second.
Second. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Zim. I'm sorry, Ms. Timmons, seconded Ms. Zim's motion? Okay.
I'm coming. Okay. Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Julio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
I did hear that. Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Great. Do you have anything else for us this evening, Ms. Zim?
That's it.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, liaison reports. I have a brief update from the JSSC Executive Committee meeting I attended this week. Does anyone else have any liaison reports? No? Okay. So the update is that Fairgrounds Middle School got their temporary certificate of occupancy for the tech ed wing. They are working on the administrative rooms, the octagon and two science rooms right now. They expect to get to the remaining science rooms in April. Regarding the new middle school, equipment starts moving into the site next week, which is very exciting. And they're hoping to break ground on the 15th if all of their meetings with the city boards go well. So fingers crossed that that all stays where we, we've got it planned. So does anyone have any questions or anything I missed from the last JSSC meeting? Okay, seeing none. Any other liaison reports? I didn't see anybody's hands a minute ago. Okay. So unfinished business. We have two items under unfinished business. I would like to suggest that we talk about the first item, which is where to have our meetings. And then we put the non-public after public comments. Because I don't see making people wait through a non-public and then coming back in. Does anyone have any objection to moving all of our non-publics to the end of the meeting? Okay, seeing none. I'm gonna put an arrow on my agenda indicating that's what we're doing. All right, so regarding our meetings, remote or in-person. I know that Dr. McKinney has spoken with ETV in the last few weeks about this. I had a brief conversation with them as well. So that so there are a couple of questions that are coming up, and one of them is our ability to switch back and forth. And another one is our ability to host individuals on Zoom. If we have members who don't want to attend in person until they're fully vaccinated, how do we incorporate their presence at the meetings? In my understanding, not being a technical person, is that there's an audio issue with with projecting Zoom on the big screen. So at this point, there's the way that they plug in the little, little computer. You know, in the corner of the, the U there, they can project a video, but they can't make the audio for everybody. So that both we can hear it and it gets picked up to go out broadcasting on television. So I don't really understand, because I'm not a technical person, but that is one issue. So if we go back to in-person, people who aren't able to make it in-person must use the telephone. Which means we would still have to vote by roll call, and those people on the phone would have to follow along without being able to see what we're doing. So this, the other bullet here is hybrid BOE meetings, and that's what I meant by trying to combine Zoom and in-person. Another two other issues that have come up when we talk about going back into person. And one is staffing at ETV. They are going to be down a person at the end of March, beginning of April, but then they'll be back up to their regular complement. So and that person is a person who's usually at the high school with us. And then the second glitch that we have to figure out a way to overcome is our superintendent search committee ad hoc meetings. Because we're working with two consultants, if we can't use Zoom in the big room, how would we be able to manage that? And ETV has, if they have equipment at Nashua North for us, and they have equipment in their building to cover the other public, city public meetings that are still on Zoom, they're not gonna have equipment to then bring to another third location potentially sit down with, with people and then have, and we still don't have a way to broadcast Zoom even at central office, because I thought about that. We used to have meetings at central office. But we still can't pull down the screen and broadcast a Zoom and have the, the audio work. And our consultants for that are not local. And we have the potential of having interviews with candidates who aren't local. Personally, I don't prefer to fly people in if we can avoid that in the first few rounds of interviews. That's not to say that we can't meet in person. It's just that these are all obstacles and I haven't figured out a way around them yet. But I welcome input from Dr. McKinney and from the board members about ideas moving forward. So no one has their hand raised. Oh, Ms. Bishop does, and then Ms. Timmons. Oh, good, yay. Do we want to put Dr. McKinney on the spot first, or go ahead with you, Ms. Bishop? Dr. McKinney's shaking his head no, so I'll make my, my list of people.
Do, do we have the ability of, of doing the committee and the ad hoc meetings remotely like we've been doing and then do full board meetings in the U?
Not currently. ETV is asking us to do all of one or the other still. They are looking at getting some more equipment so that they would be able to do that, but it wouldn't be for like tomorrow. But if we were to say vote out a little bit, we have the potential, but I can't promise it. It's not our budget. Okay, hold on. People rose that raised their hands, and I didn't write it down fast enough. Ms. Timmons, Ms. Julio, Ms. Brown, and then Ms. Johnson. Okay, did you have another question or comment, Ms. Bishop? Dr. McKinney?
I just want to share that I haven't heard back about the, for lack of a better word, I'll call it a two-way mixer, which would allow when people are in the boardroom to speak into the microphone and be recorded for those at home. And then when the people were zooming into the room, you wouldn't hear their voice blaring over the speaker above you. So it's kind of an essential piece. So if the board wanted to wait to your next meeting and have that information, I offer that to you as probably a key piece of information. Otherwise, you'd be limited to using the phones. And obviously, once you make a switch, you're committed to it one way or the other, because ETV wants to bring all the equipment back. So when I have the information about whatever that device is called, I'll certainly share it with you.
Thank you, Dr. McKinney. And that aligns with the conversation that I had today as well, that it would have to be all of one or the other. No hybrid at this time, because we just don't have the, oh. Jimmy from ETV says it's a mix minus mixer. That doesn't sound like a real name of a thing, Jim. Okay, Ms. Bishop?
Just back, back to the, the hybrid question. Sorry, my, my computer froze. Seems to be a common issue tonight. If we did do an element of back to the meetings for the public that isn't comfortable coming in, are we able to accommodate all different kinds of public comment by us returning? Like, what is most favorable to the public?
No, there's no ability to call. So when I say people can call into the meeting, that's not true. There is no number to call in there. We have phones that are able to dial out to contact members, a maximum of, I think, four, but it's really hard to do a meeting with four people who can't see what's going on. And that counts the phone that's embedded in the wall. But we don't have a phone number that we can give to the public or a person there to pick up the phone and manage that. And then, or like a hold system or any of that.
Right.
Because it's just, it's not. So if we were to, when we go back, oh my goodness, I'm sorry, when we go back, we will be going back. We will require people to come in person if they want to speak with us. Also, I have large dogs who are very loud, so I apologize. That was just them bringing a toy to me here on television. Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think everyone raised their hands kind of at the same time. So I have written down Ms. Timmons, Ms. Julio, Ms. Brown, Ms. Johnson, and Ms. Zim. And then I suppose I can just throw Ms. Odin and Mr. Guarino in there too, in case you guys have something to say. So, so it's, Ms. Timmons is next.
Okay, Ms. Bishop did ask my question, but I just want to make a statement. This came in from CDC. Those fully vaccinated can gather with other vaccinated people indoors while wearing a mask or social distancing. Federal health officials said today. So that may be something we might consider as well. We can gather indoors. Because one of the reasons why I didn't want to be in person is because I wasn't vaccinated and I wasn't comfortable being in the boardroom. But now I'm fully vaccinated and other people that's vaccinated can be indoors while wearing a mask or social distancing. So.
What, did they say? I didn't mean that. Did they say something about people being vaccinated along with people who aren't vaccinated?
They said those fully vaccinated can gather with other vaccinated people.
Okay.
So if you and I are vaccinated, we okay. But I don't know if the whole board would be vaccinated at the same time or but I'm comfortable going back in, however, you may not be.
Great. Okay, thank you. Mr. Dunn, I'm gonna let you skip the line because it's a school night.
Oh, well, also, just talking off of Ms. Timmons, I read the same article, and it had said that if someone, someone in Ms. Timmons was vaccinated and we were not, and we had maintained social distancing and masks, it actually encouraged that that was very safe.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. And that's pretty much what we're doing in our, our hybrid classes.
That's exactly the same thing, yes.
But with that, we can manage the number of people there, whereas we can't say only six members of the public are allowed to attend our meetings to maintain social distancing. That's not fair and providing equal access. So I'm not sure how to manage that yet either, but I'm thinking about it. Okay, Ms. Julio and then Ms. Brown?
I, I have a few, a few questions and a few observations. I have received one vaccine and I will be receiving another. But, and I would very much like to meet in person. However, I need some clarification on whether when we do go back to in-person meetings, will we be wearing masks? Will we be six feet apart? Because I'm not sure all, some of the members of our, of our board who may wish to be vaccinated are not yet old enough to be vaccinated. Some of the members have previously expressed that they do not wish to get vaccinated. And I'm also very concerned about the public input protocol. And so what I want to say at this point is that once I've, I've been vaccinated with both vaccines and the time has passed, if we're going to meet in a room and we are wearing masks and we will be six feet apart, then I would be willing to come to the meetings. But if there are going to be public people coming into the room, we do not know if they're vaccinated. We do not know if they've been going to parties every night. We have no idea what kind of lifestyle they've been living. And I have not spent the last year of my life away from my loved ones to go and, and somehow get infected or carry that infection back to my family. So at this point, I would be one of the people who would prefer to be on the phone for the meetings. And I'm sure as things go on and more people get vaccinated and the numbers look better, that I would be willing to change my mind. But that's pretty much where I stand right now.
Thank you, Ms. Julio. Two things, there is still a mask ordinance. No one is allowed to be in any of our district buildings without a mask on. That is not negotiable at this time. And social distancing is one of our policies for our hybrid reopening, and I don't see us waiving that for board members. Mr. Johnson over at ETV did just let me know that we can do, that he can do a Zoom-only meeting, for example, for the superintendent search committee meetings, and do our meetings in person. He just can't do Zoom and in-person simultaneously. So we could theoretically have schedule some committee meetings to be all Zoom and some meetings to be all in-person, but we can't combine the two. That sounds, I think I got that right this time. So I apologize. I did not express that properly before. Okay, Ms. Brown?
Is there a motion on the floor? Are we just discussing this?
Discussion.
May I make a motion?
Yeah, you have the floor.
I, I move to put all full board meetings back to the boardroom at Nashua North and to keep committee meetings via Zoom.
Okay. Great, isn't that a second for Ms. Brown's motion, which is to have our full board meetings at Nashua North? And our committee meetings remain via Zoom?
Beginning when? When would that start?
I think Ms. Brown's looking at a calendar to decide.
Yes, so I amend my motion to
Yeah, it's still your
begin, begin on March 29th.
Is that before or after our next meeting?
I think that's our next full meeting. So that's three weeks away.
I have to pull out my calendar. Yes, she's right. So that would begin with our next full meeting. On the 29th. Is there a second for Ms. Brown's motion?
I'll second if a conversation right now.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Great. Ms. Brown, did you have anything else that you wish to say while you have the floor?
No, I'm, I think that's work, workable. I think that, that, you know, the kids are in school, the teachers are going in the buildings. I think it's responsible for us, especially for the large groups. And I think the fact that ETVs let us know that they can still televise the meetings remotely for smaller groups, that's good. There's not generally a public comment period for committee meetings. And so I don't think that's as big of a concern in that case, but this will be give people an opportunity to come in if they would like to. And ultimately, and this, no, I'll go ahead. That's it. Thank you very much.
Ms. Bishop, did, I'm sorry, Ms. Bishop, did you have a specific clarifying question?
Yes.
Like to go to Ms. Brown, Ms. Johnson?
Sorry, it was just a clarifying. I was writing down what the motion was. Is it full board in-person? Or the committee, because the committee meetings don't have the public comment, but the full board does. Are we doing live?
I was, what, full board meetings, traditional, regular special board meetings and our monthly board meetings of the full Board of Education, the nine of us in the Nashua North boardroom, committee meetings of smaller groups would still be remote.
Can I, can I comment to that? Or do I have to wait? Sorry.
Not yet. Let's let people have the floor in order, but I'll come around to it. Just because it's polite. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I'm glad Ms. Brown made that motion because that was gonna be my next thing. I think it's about time we get back into the boardroom. As we're having our students get back into school, our teachers are going back into school, we need to be the leaders and show that we're going back where we belong also. I do believe we should have the committee meetings at, in our boardroom too. I do believe we should have the committee meetings at, in our boardroom too. Go back, just go back all the way, not just, you know, full board. But I would like to amend her motion to add the committee meetings also.
Is anybody wanting to second Ms. Johnson's amendment to change it to everything to be in person?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Who seconded that?
Ms. Odin.
Thank you.
And I, and I'm just gonna say again, I think it's time we go back and show true leadership back into this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. But next up, I have Ms. Zee.
I have my second, I have my second vaccine next Tuesday. So I will be ready to go back, but I'm concerned about if we go with committees, that, does that include the ad hoc superintendent search? Because I thought I heard you saying that, 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 I know it needs to be on Zoom because that way we don't have to pay for all of this. So I could not support the committees simply because of the ad hoc committee. If you want to put the committees but accepting the ad hoc committee, that might be another thing. But with the ad hoc committee in there, I couldn't vote for it because, because we can't afford, we, we are, we are a poverty district. I don't care how anybody looks at it, that's the bottom line. And we need Chromebooks, but so.
Could we add the word standing committee?
That actually might do it because at this, the ad hoc superintendent search would not be a standing committee. So yes, I think that, in my view, that would do it.
Thank you.
Okay, does that work? Does that work for you, Ms. Johnson?
That's fine with me.
Okay, so the amendment is now to amend the motion to say that full board meetings and standing committees will be in person as of 3/29. Okay. Ms. Odin, you were next.
No, I was just going to say, I've wanted to go back for a while. I'm not fully vaccinated, but I'm willing to wear a mask and do six, six feet of social distancing. And if I have to sit in a seat that's not on the horseshoe, that's okay with me. I'll do anything. I'm, I, I would like to be back into the boardroom. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Odin. Mr. Guarino, you didn't have your hand raised, but through everybody.
I'm not gonna support any of this because I think it, it, it's, it's very, I don't know, it goes back and forth. It's like watching a ping pong match. But I think there's a difference between being a leader and being cavalier, taking chances. I, I, I think, I think it's, we're making more, making it more difficult for ourselves. I think there will come a time when we'll, we'll, we'll go all the way, all back, all back in, but, but I don't think this is the time yet. And I'm not gonna support, I'm not gonna support this. And, but I will, you know, I will go along with whatever the board votes for, but I'm not gonna vote for this. So, I think there will come a time, maybe next month, maybe a month after, but we have to go slow. We have to be very careful. This is what happened before, and, you know, we had, we had some months in this country where we were flattening the curve, and then the summer came, and then all of a sudden, everybody got, everybody got, you know, thought it was over and it wasn't over, it got worse. So I think we have to go slow. And I think we have to wait until more people are vaccinated. So I'm not going to support it.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. I have something, and then we'll go, Ms. Bishop and Ms. Johnson had wanted to speak for a second time. So the, the thing that I wanted to mention, well, two things, since everyone's announcing their vaccine status. I'm not vaccinated. I do have an autoimmune disorder, but I'm not on the list. So it will be some time before I get my vaccination. However, I'm willing to double mask it. Because I think, I just am. I have two concerns. One is equal access to the public to our meetings. And if people are not able to physically come to the meetings, then they don't get to have their voice heard. Which in an ordinary times, well, you have to go to your public meeting. But we're still in a pandemic, and I hate the idea of disenfranchising people. The second thing that I wanted to know, and I mentioned it at the beginning, is that ETV has asked that we not do this the last weeks in March, or the first two weeks in April, because they are down. Jimmy, who runs these things, they've asked that we postpone it until the 12th, which is one more meeting. So, when we get to a place where we can make another amendment, that would be my amendment, at least, that we work cooperatively with ETV and we make it the 12th. I mean, our meetings last a long time. They have budgetary requirements too. So, that's my other thing. So, the 12th at the earliest would be my suggestion, and just keeping in mind equal access. So. Okay, going back around. Ms. Bishop, thank you for waiting.
Not a problem. Yeah, I mean, I think even in just the, just listening to the public and, and how they've been wanting to get back in, you know, keeping public comment going, going. If we don't have an option for people who aren't comfortable coming in, we're effectively silencing the community, which I know a lot of people are significantly against. I obviously don't mind going in, probably not out of my house more than any of you guys have. But if there was a way that we could have people call in to do public comment, I, I know you're shaking your head, but I, I can't, I can't support people not being able to come in. I mean, it's, we can't just only allow certain people into meetings. We have to allow everybody in. That's what we're here to do. So, if we can figure out a way to get them to call in, I will say yes, but at this point, I can't, I can't help with that piece of it. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Maybe if we can get them to email in or other ways. Email's another way to communicate. We can give them and have our computer, if our computer will work. But, you know, I'm, I'm gonna say again, although some people don't like it, and some people think that my job is menial, but it's a job that puts a roof over my head and food on the table, and I'm essential to my husband and myself. I've been back to work since June. I wear my mask, I go to work, I do a temperature check, I answer the questions that my company requires me to do, and I'm back to work. People go out, if people can say on this board that they never go out, they never do anything, and there's a reason why they shouldn't go back into work, I have to work. So I'm out there every day. I'll work six days a week if I have to. And I'm willing to go back in, and I've been the one who's been fighting for this for a long time. And it is about leadership. We are a board, we've been elected, and we're here to make tough decisions. And we're here to be out there, accessible to the public, and also be out there and do our jobs in a meeting room. Yes, this pandemic was horrible, and yes, there's still incidents out there, but the curve has been flattened for a long time. This whole thing about being locked up was to flatten the curve. And we flattened the curve a long time ago. Matter of fact, New Hampshire was lucky, we really never had curve, like some other places like New York, and we're finding out what happened in New York. I mean, we need to get out there and we need to do our jobs. And if some people are afraid to go in, then if we could do three or four lines, then that's what we'll have to do. But if the rest of the board, the majority, wants to get back in there, then it's time to get back in there. I'm willing to wait to April 12th. But we need to do this. I mean, it's very hard, the meetings are long, it's very hard to do Zoom. I have to shut the camera off sometimes because my eyes get tired. It's a horrible thing. But it happens, and then you get back on the camera again. And the one-to-one interaction with people is a lot better than Zooming. And that's what we forgot about. Socialization on a computer is different than socialization when we get into the meeting and we say hi to everybody, being personable, and we leave. And we walk out and we're friends. I'll wear my mask, I'll social distance. I don't care, but I think it's important that us as a board, we get back to the socialization and working as a team again rather than the Zoom. It's a lot easier to work with everybody in person than it is through Zoom. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Ms. Johnson. All right, so, Ms. Zee, were you asking to speak?
You know, I, I, I think that this, the point that, that people won't have a voice makes me, I won't vote for it if people can't call in because I agree with you, Mrs. Raymond, that, and to the others who have said that. I, I would never want anybody to think that we took their voice. And better to have a voice over the phone than no voice at all. So I, I think we should hold off. I think we should, I think we should vote on this at the next meeting. We can't do it until, by the way, I did want to say, I see here that Jim is having his hip replaced, March 25th. He sent the message. I want him to know that we care about him and, and we'll be, we'll be thinking about him and, and hoping for the very best because, because he's a loyal, wonderful employee. He served our district well. So, but, but, but on the other issue, that's my thinking now. And, and I think you're right. We, how can you do that? So, so we've circled the wagon back to nowhere. Why don't we just wait until the next meeting and talk about it again, since we can't do it before April 12th anyway?
Okay, so are you wanting to make a motion to table it, or do you want to go ahead and vote on the amendment and the original motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, second motion to table. Oh.
Look at, sorry.
Ray, did you want to second it, or did you have something else?
I was seconding it.
Okay, we'll, we'll go with Mr. Guarino seconded it. So, Ms. Zee, motions to table. I don't believe that the motion table is debatable. Mr. Guarino and Ms. Zee, am I correct on that?
I believe so.
Okay, so the motion to table till the next meeting. Miss.
Ready?
Yep.
I am.
Go ahead, Ms. Bishop.
Okay, so I, Ms. Bishop votes yes, table. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ray, Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zee?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion is tabled.
Okay, so we will put this on the next agenda, and we'll have more information about, hold on, I have to look what it's called again, the mix minus mixer for hybrid Zoom and in-person meetings for the next meeting as well. And then we'll go from there. So, that takes care of that one. Negotiations, we're gonna move to the end. Personnel, non-public, let's go to the end. So that brings us to public comments and board member comments. Ms. Kinsella, we kind of like, just finished very quickly. Do we have anyone in the waiting room, or ought we do board member comments and then come back to it?
I do have a couple people.
Yep. Well, let's do that then. So this is the public comment period for anything on the agenda or off the agenda. And I just ask that people be concise, identify yourself, and remember that we have 15 minutes, and we'd like to give everybody a chance to speak. Oh, I have someone already, sorry. Caller 7627, go ahead. Can, can you hear us, 7627?
Hi, can, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Oh, okay, great. My name is Joy Devens. I live in Nashua. I have a junior at South and an eighth grader at Fairgrounds. I wanted to start by saying that wasn't the smile on Mr. Dunn's face when he was talking about going back to the hybrid this week priceless? So that was wonderful to see. It made my night, and I'm sure yours. Also, great to see this morning, the fourth and fifth graders finally going to school for the first time in 357 days. I did want to share my sentiment of gratitude for the first, for the two half-days we currently have. I also wanted to express the sentiment of needing to push for more plans and more progress, and urgently, we are closing in on the end of our school year. I was surprised to hear this week, when I reached out to principals, and that they were not aware of any further plans being discussed to increase in-person instruction. How can we get from two half-days to four, to five? Can we combine cohorts quickly? Can the students be spaced three feet, not six? If teachers will be vaccinated by the end of March, why not a full return to school in April? How can we be assured of a full return in fall? Why isn't that on the agenda tonight, or every night, or every week until our kids are fully in school? As parents, we are inviting weekly communication from the district on the plan through June and for the fall, including metrics and deliverables. Planning, accountability, and communication are key for moving forward. We hope this search for superintendent is not entirely exhaustive, as we have trustworthy talent in-house in our community. Thank you to our principals and our superintendent. We look forward to swift and continued headway. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. Oh, I have a checkmark. Good evening, Ms. Pearl, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Caitlin Pearl. I live in Nashua. I have multiple children in the school district. I have two questions for the administration. Well, first, not a question, a comment. I want to thank Dr. McKinney. My two little ones finally are going back into school. My second grader last week, those two in-person days, and his excitement just seeing people was really refreshing. It's been really hard with that. My fifth grader has yet to go in. He goes in on Wednesday. I will ask, I, I miss hearing from Marsha Bagley. I would like a little input in our special education community. What's happening with IEP kids? Kids with executive functioning issues. Today was only our first day with guided learning, and I'll tell you, it was hard. I know it was a Monday, but it was hard. He doesn't possess all the tools for guided learning. And I want to know, are we, Nashua, looking to help these kiddos a little bit more? Is there an option for kids on IEPs to go all four days? It hasn't been presented to me as an option. I'm struggling because friends in towns with kids in similar situations, their kids are receiving this option. My son, he does struggle. He's a bright boy. He can do this. He just can't do it this way. And I just want to know that there's a plan that we're pushing forward. Moving in a completely different direction, AP testing. I just wrote the check for the AP test for my high school students. Full price for what's not been a full-price education this year. One of the classes we've opted out because it just wasn't enough. Why are our kids being charged full price for AP exams that quite frankly, aren't the full experience? Why aren't these being addressed? Those are my concerns for you tonight. Again, thank you, Dr. McKinney, for really giving us more communication and more of an experience. Unfortunately, for us, Nashua is in September, where other schools are way ahead. I encourage you all to keep pushing, keep pushing and catch these kids up. This year isn't over yet. Don't forget that. We can do a lot more than what we're doing. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Pearl. Good evening, caller 0786. You're on the air with the National Board of Ed. You could please identify yourself and keep your comments to us in two minutes.
Sure, this is Sonia Prince from 49 Tough Drive. I wanted to say thank you to the board for all your hard work. I've been watching all along since last year. So thank you, everyone involved. I was concerned about, when I heard the sports program, everything's great because everything's great because the sports are outside and I'm happy about that, but she did mention at one point that kids or people who were vaccinated didn't have to quarantine. And that would be okay if they're only exposed to other people who are vaccinated, but I think that's a dangerous thing to say that if they go out of state or whatever, they don't have to come back and quarantine because they can still contract and carry the virus to other kids who can bring it home to their parents, et cetera. So unless we know for sure that everybody around is vaccinated, I think that's a little risky. But everything else looks really great. And same thing for your meetings. If you're sure that everyone's vaccinated and everyone in the public attending is vaccinated, then I guess you won't have a problem. But if you can't verify that, it's going to be impossible to control. So thank you very much. I think everybody's doing a great job and I appreciate all your hard work and for being cautious. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think everybody's doing a great job and I appreciate all your hard work.
8413, if you could please turn down your TV because you are on with the Board of Education. Hello? Caller 8413. Have the wrong one. Oh, you're on mute, caller 8143. Tara, can you unmute her? Them?
No, unfortunately not because it's a phone.
Oh. Okay. Well, why don't we take a pause on that while they try and get themselves off a mute? Is there someone else that we can go to and come back to them?
That's actually, this is our last caller.
Oh, dear. Caller 8413, if you can hear me, your phone itself is on mute. Could you unmute yourself so that we can hear your comment? Oh, that's a shame. All right. I guess we'll have to call it a glitch. Jim says if you press star six, it might unmute you. Caller 8413. Oh, hey. Yes, I hear you now.
That is so strange because I wasn't on mute. I am so sorry, but I've never heard of star six before, but thank you to the IEP person or whoever got me through. My name is Wendy Keefe. I'm a resident of Nashua. And I'm just calling, and I'm sorry that I took so long and I took up some of the board members' time because of this glitch. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. One of them was the return to school. I wanted to make sure I thanked all of the administrators, all the way up to Dr. McKinney, who made that happen for us. The looks on the student faces from kindergarten up to seniors in high school, believe it or not, was absolutely priceless. Something that the board might not know is both there have been parent groups at both high schools that have been working really diligently to try and make the seniors feel somewhat supported and appreciated. We had a little drive-through event for them and we had seniors crying. And I think the board members, especially those of you who are so afraid of allowing in-person to happen in board meetings or more time back in school, these kids were crying. They were so happy that something was done for them and they were acknowledged again. I want to pay attention to also the student rep survey. There was one really big ticket item for me, and that was the teachers themselves mentioned as a con of the return to hybrid learning, excuse me, with the short duration of classes. We should be taking active steps to be getting two full days back. So that everybody is back full days. We're back two full days. If you chose hybrid, if you're remote, you still wonderfully get to have that choice of remote. If you chose in-person, it should go to two full days and then it should very quickly go to four full days. And that should start with the seniors. By that point, it's going to be the end of March. This needs to be done in a very quick, systematic fashion. They are almost out of time. I personally have been begging you for almost a year now. So many kids don't have a voice in this and they're trying to tell you this in their surveys that they're giving you through these reps. Please listen to their voices. I'm speaking specifically to you, Ms. Guarino, and to you, Ms. Timmons, and to you, Ms. Gilio. These kids need to be in the building if that is their choice. Those of you who have autoimmune issues or compromised immune systems, you have that wonderful choice and I'm so happy for you that you do. But there are kids that need to be in the classroom. I have messages from teachers saying, "I needed to see your son today," and he gave me a huge smile. And it was reciprocated back. And my kid came home saying he learned more in one day because he had face-to-face interaction, not because the teachers weren't trying. They're wonderful. But face-to-face teaching cannot be replaced. It can't. Please listen to these voices. They are speaking to you loudly. This is not about you individually. Your needs are being taken care of. Theirs aren't. Respectfully, have a wonderful evening.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Keefe. Ms. Kinsella, anybody else?
I think we're good.
Okay. So that concludes our public comment period this evening. I want to thank all the administrators who have stuck with us all evening. I appreciate your time. So we have board member comments and then Dr. McKinney has a couple of things to discuss with us in non-public. Dr. McKinney, did you still want to do that this evening despite the hour? Yes? Okay. All right. So board member comments and then we'll go into the non-public. Let's do it in voting order, which Ms. Bishop has. So, Ms. Bishop, who's first? Oh, you're first.
I'm first. Actually, I have no comments. I think everything I wanted to say I've already said. So, say them again. I know everyone loves to listen and be here forever, but I'm good. The next person in our roll call is Ms. Gilio.
I too have no comments tonight. Thank you.
I typically waive my time until the end.
Then Ms. Odin?
No comments at this point. Thank you.
Then Ms. Brown.
Sorry, y'all. You gotta listen to me for a minute. So first of all, I want to thank the teachers and the principals for your flexibility this past month as we've returned so many students to classroom. Your hard work is not going unnoticed. And that goes from the crossing guards with waving with smiles on their faces all the way up to the food service workers and the janitors that now you got people in the building. The trash cans got to be changed. Thank you for everything you're doing and the administrators for double timing it these last couple of weeks, burning it at both ends, all these late-night meetings. So thank you all for that. And I also really want to thank the students and commend you all, from the kindergartners and preschoolers all the way up through the seniors for your perseverance this school year. And you truly have been inspirational above all of us adults out here who are making decisions on your behalf. You really are amazing. And Liz and Spencer, you are shining pillars in this community and the work you put into your surveys and presentations each week. Just really, it's amazing and it's really good valuable information. So thank you for that. In regards to a few of the things that some of the parent comments came in tonight, I do want to highlight a method moving forward that I do believe is important. I think that we are doing a great job getting these kids into school and I'm glad that thus far, everything's been safe. And I think we need to consider treating the grades or even individual schools differently moving forward. I think we've done that when there's been a need to take a classroom or a cohort or through sports, one group remotely, but still moving forward with the rest of the groups. So if we need to, as we move forward, think of maybe elementary school, if they've got classrooms that are in a position where their cohorts are small enough that they can be going in for four days or five days a week, or middle school or high school, no matter what that is, I do think that's something that we need to take into consideration moving forward rather than still considering these numbers district-wide. So that's just my advice and for something that the administrators to focus on in the next couple of weeks. Because I really would like to see students who want to be in the classroom, in the classroom as much as possible, especially since we are, I'm grateful that we're going to be able to vaccinate any teachers who want to be vaccinated within the next month or so. So thank you also for putting those clinics together and the work you're doing with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Ms. Johnson is next.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd like to say thank you to our two students representatives. They've been great on the board. I love your presentations. Dr. McKinney, thank you. Mr. Parker, Mr. Andre. The parents, you can hear in the voices that they're happy and thankful for getting the kids back into school. I think two and a half days as a beginning, a slow rollout for some of our students need it, where they've been out of the classroom and some of the students who've never seen the classroom is a good start. But listening to the parents, I think our seniors, I do agree, need to get into those four days, five days a week. And I truly believe the rest of our students, hopefully by the end of the year, hopefully by April, that they'll be back in school at least four days a week, four days. They need it. The teachers need it. We have to start moving on with life now. And I think it's very important, the socialization piece for everybody at this point in time. But I want to say again to the administration, thank you for the hard work and picking up the pieces and getting it rolling quickly. And I hope to see more movement here with our students here. And that's all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want the people to know, and there were some people who called in today, that these decisions that we make on this board are not easy. So I think some people might have the wrong idea that we're making decisions based on our needs or my needs, or my needs come first before anyone else. And that's just not true. I don't put my needs before anyone. And I know that some other people on this board were called out and I know those people individually and they really care about the community and they care about others. There's a lot of information to absorb when we make decisions. Everybody's got an opinion on all different sides. But I just want people to know that when I do make decisions, it's not about me. It's about the school district. It's about the kids and the teachers and the community. And we need to do the best to support each other and not start pointing the fingers, the blame fingers. That's the wrong thing to do. And I think the teachers do deserve a lot of... They deserve a lot of thanks for getting us through this, educating our kids through this. My daughter was educated through this, although she wasn't in the 2021 year. She was in the 2020 year. And we, and I just want to make sure that we have the right information, the public has the right information. We didn't flatten the curve. The curve was peaked. We lost 500,000 Americans and we're still losing Americans. Okay, in January, in December, in January, we lost more people and we had more infections than at any other time. That was a peak. That wasn't a flat curve. The curve went down and then boom, it shot right up. So I just want to make sure that the information out there is correct when people speak. And I just want to leave with the words that one of the teachers had said to me in an email, and I've said it before. She said she's making the best of her situation. And that's the kind of attitude that we have in this district and I'm thankful for it. And I'm glad that we could get sports rolling. At least we had, kids had some kind of normalcy. It wasn't exactly normal in our sports season, but I'm glad that the kids had something to hold on to because time goes by very fast. Our kids' education, childhood, it goes by very fast. And so, like I said, we have to do this as a community. And I think we're going to get through this together as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. I believe Ms. Timmons is next. No, no, I'm wrong. Ms. Zim and then Ms. Timmons.
No comments. Thank you.
Ms. Timmons?
I'm a follow, Ms. Zim. No comment.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for staying this evening. We certainly have a lot to think about between now and the next meeting. I wanted to thank Ms. Brown for bringing up the free and reduced lunch meals that are available for students, for all students. That is both in the schools and we are continuing our meal distribution out in the community because about 45% of our students chose the remote option. So it's not only in the schools that students are able to access breakfast and lunch. We are continuing with our efforts to make sure that our remote students have access to healthy meals twice a day as well. And that information is on our website. So I always like to mention that. The other thing I want to mention, just as a community reference, is that the Nashville Public Library is back open. They have limited availability for how many people can be in the building at a time. But yay for the Nashville Public Library, if you're like me and you like real books in your hand. Okay. I think that's it for public comments. So at this time, I'm looking for a motion to go into non-public under RSA A, RSA 91A3 A and E.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Bishop, can you call the roll?
Yep. Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino?
Yes.
Ms. Zim?
Yes.
Ms. Timmons?
Timmons said yes.
Okay.
Okay. So there, we have nothing to vote on after non-public. So people don't have to hang around waiting for us to come back. When we come back, it will be early to be to seal the minutes and join the meeting.